A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated August 31st, 2023, and reading as follows. Dear Commissioners, A regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 5:00 PM in the Service Center of the Delta County, in the Boardroom of the Delta County Service Center. I'm sorry. Left my script in the printer. Sincerely yours, Nancy J. Preseraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. As we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance and for the Commissioners to make the best interests of the citizens they serve, and we pray for the safety of the military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Moll.
Here. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, folks. The meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We have, under special orders of business tonight, the Commissioners' informational workshop, and then we have a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 budget. During the Commissioners' informational workshop, you will see conversation, discussions between the Commissioners on various items. We do not vote during this workshop. It is more of a committee on the whole. And then, of course, we will go into the budget public hearing. We have Ashley put together QPAD coming in tonight for presentation. Let's start off with them. Welcome and thank you.
I'm Ryan Carrick from QPAD. Our offices are on the other side of the wall here. And a couple of the Commissioners serve on our board. So some of this they've heard before, but I'd like to hear, put it before the whole board, on some of the activities we've done as a result of grant from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes Energy, centered around materials management, which is recycling, composting, and regular solid waste. Part 115 laws in Michigan have changed, and in the end of September, the county board will receive a call for materials management plans from Eagle, and one will be required from every county in the state. So at the beginning of our engagement grant, we came forward with about four different areas we thought were issues for materials management in the central UP. Those were education, or what materials can be recycled and what are the benefits; access, where can I take my recyclable material; logistics, where does my material go once it's collected; and market, how is my material used and who could use it for what? We held six county engagement workshops, one in each county throughout the summer, and we had a number of participants discuss materials management issues. And we're now going out and giving additional presentations in anticipation of the call for plans that's coming. So from those events, we found four main issues separate from what we had already found. First, a lack of capacity, so not enough capacity to take on responsibilities of staffing new programs and the cost of implementation for new recycling and composting provisions; a lack of information on funding mechanisms and contract language for municipalities, both at the local level, county level, and larger; logistics, large rural areas where curbside recycling is not feasible, and access to recycling drop-off stations will be limited; and then staffing and security concerns for those sites; and a lack of diverse set of stakeholders and regular engagement. So who's involved in recycling and composting now? Who's interested in partnering? Who's building participation? Who's creating industry development in the local area? And so forth. So just a real short overview of those Part 115 changes. Back in 1997, the department last called for solid waste plans, which only dealt with municipal solid waste or the regular garbage that goes into the landfill. Those took a number of years to come to fruition, and QPAD helped each county in the central region bring those forward. You could see that a lot of them came to be and then were never touched again. Currently, right now, Dickinson's is in the middle of updates, and it's probably one of the last counties to update their solid waste plan before these new plans come into effect. One of the other important things is that the state offered no money for this materials, or for the solid waste plan development, and the counties fronted all the money for these planning processes, which took multiple years. So the new Part 115 legislation regulates landfills, transfer stations, and waste diversion facilities, and the new ones are called materials utilization facilities. These are materials recovery facilities, or facilities where recycling is processed to sell to the secondary market. There's one of those here in town at the landfill and one up in Marquette County, but those are the two that are in the central UP. Composting facilities, those are large composting facilities outside your backyards where composting is made for resale; anaerobic digesters, where they convert compostable material into gas for energy use; and innovative technology facilities, which are a fancy way of saying energy generation from waste. These new laws became effective at the end of March 2023, and we've heard from the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy that they will call for plans in the end of September of 2023. And the board should have received a letter from Eagle back in June that put this out, just to make you aware of that. So within 180 days of that call for plans, the county board will have to submit a notice of intent to the department that they are going to engage in materials management planning. Within 180 days of that, you have to form a materials management planning committee, which is a permanent body that will develop these plans. Once you submit the notice of intent, you'll have three years to develop a plan, and then after it's approved, ongoing reporting and review will be done every two years, and plan updates every five years for the foreseeable future. So if you don't want to create a plan, the county has the option to waive it, and then all of the local municipalities in the county together can file a notice of intent on their own, and if they don't, then we, as the regional planning agency, can. And if no one does, then Eagle will take it. But if Eagle takes it, if they're authorized to create a plan on the county's behalf, they will set the benchmarks, goals, and assurances for solid waste recycling and composting to be met, to meet the requirements of the state law, and they will force haulers and local facilities to meet those standards. The counties will also not be eligible for planning and implementation grants or recycling infrastructure and education grants offered by Eagle. So as that last time the planning came around, there was no state funding. There is state funding baked into this law. It is $60,000 for each county to develop and implement their plan. That's per year for the next several years, plus $10,000 a county for every county that engages in multi-county planning, and then 50 cents per capita, up to $300,000 for the first three years on top of the 60,000. So these funds will cover the cost of plan development, the initial implementation, be matching funds for grants, so forth, as long as they're used for expanding recycling and composting activities. So here, you could see that at Delta County, it ends up being somewhere around $78,000 on a base fund for the first three years, plus $10,000 if you engage in multi-county So as QPAD, we are a regional agency that serves the six counties of the central upper peninsula, Elger, Delta School, Craft, Dickinson, Menominee, and Marquette. So benefit of a regional partnership is that you can create a multi-county materials management plan under the law. Under this, you have an economy of scale with all the work being done for several counties in one place. There's additional planning grant money for counties that engage in multi-county planning. We pool resources, we coordinate grant and education opportunities, and then the most important part is that we can create a single materials management planning committee for the entire six-county area or multi-county, whoever joins together. So QPAD is proposing that the next step that each of our six counties take is that at the end of September, when you receive the call for plans, we'd like to start developing a multi-county plan of all six counties in this central UP. This is done by entering an agreement under the Urban Cooperation Act, which you would enter with the other counties and us as QPAD to be the designated planning agency. The counties would then act as joint county approval agencies to take action on that notice of intent to plan and form a single materials management planning committee. So all of this could possibly take a year to go through, and then that planning grant money would be available, but we're hoping that it's done in the next several months so that we continue to move forward with the momentum we have from these grants. So the interlocal agreement that we're proposing allows all six counties to act as a single planning area for solid waste recycling and composting development. It retains individual county oversight of the plan's approval for each county. It names QPAD as the county's designated planning agency, which we've already been for over 20 years, in every county except Marquette, which does it on their own. It would create a single materials management planning committee. We would nominate then two, we would nominate the members that represent the representatives outlined in the law, and I'll show that in the next slide, to that committee, and then each county would appoint two members to the committee without our nomination. So there's still some sort of local control. You get additional members to the board. And then it would also provide for us to receive compensation for materials management activities from the anticipated planning grant funding that's coming. So all of this will be done at no net cost to the county. It'll just be a portion of that planning grant money that's available. That 11-member planning committee, if the county decides to go on their own, it has to be 11 members for each area, or if we join as a six-county area, still 11 members plus the additional we'll get for multi-county. So that's a little bit different from the current solid waste planning committees, which are 14 members, but include a representative of a solid waste disposal facility, a representative of a hauler, a representative of materials recovery facility, a representative of a composting facility, a representative of a waste diversion facility, an environmental interest group, elected officials of the counties, the townships, cities, and villages, a representative of a business that generates and manages material, it's just basically someone who throws away trash at a business, and a representative of the regional planning agency, or us. So you can see, in Delta County, that is highly possible that you could go on your own and form an 11-member committee, but other areas that don't have a materials recovery facility or a composting facility will have trouble creating these committees on their own, which is another reason why we're proposing a joint six-county committee, so that we're able to draw members from a larger area. So in total, this interlocal materials management planning committee for the six-county area will have 23 members. The 11 I've described at the top here are the ones that we would nominate to the committee and then have them appointed by their respective county where they live or represent, and then each county would identify and appoint an elected official that represents the county or the municipalities and a business that generates and manages material. And this is how that's outlined in the Part 115 laws. QPAD would have representation as a regional planning agency, that's part of the law, but we would also act separately as the designated planning agency to administer this commission and notice and coordinate meetings, develop the plan, and finally get it through its approval process, which is expected to take almost that three years. So I won't go through all these activities, but these are all the ones that are outlined in the law just for designated planning agency activities. I've outlined them in black and blue, which are ongoing activities that are current, that every year we're going to have to continue to have this committee meet and develop the plan and go over enforcement activities and update relevant information, and then during planning years, we'll prepare or revise the materials management plan. So from that 60,000 plus the per capita funds of 78,000 that Delta County is expected to get from the materials management planning grants, we would like to propose that under a multi-county materials management plan, we receive $8,000 a year per county per year for ongoing activities, and then $5,000 per county per year for planning activities. So $13,000 per county per year for a six-county materials management plan at no net cost for the county, which would leave somewhere around that 70, the extra $75,000 for expanding recycling, composting, and solid waste activities in the county. This is expected to be our lowest rate in the opportunity that we have to form this multi-county plan. If we end up with a bunch of single plans, or maybe one or two counties joining together, we expect that we would have to hire additional staff to facilitate these planning, all these planning committees that we'd have to oversee, and our rate would be a little bit higher. So this is just a diagram that shows all that materials management funding. We would hopefully have that flow just a little bit to us and to the planning committee for the administration of the plan and its development, and then the rest of it, or the bulk of it, to the materials management coordinating agency of your choice, likely the Delta County Landfill Authority, for per capita funding for specific county activities, for staffing and operations, for infrastructure, for education and outreach, and matching funds for grants. And we know from the benchmark recycling standards outlined in the law that Delta County will need at least one recycling drop-off station somewhere out in the rural area of the county to meet the requirements of the law, and a composting facility that can provide capacity for the county to accept organic waste. So right now, this is just what we've proposed to get started on this activity. Our interlocal agreement does not affect current operations of facilities, haulers, or other agreements, does not replace the current authority boards that are in place, does not define the responsibilities of the counties outside the agreement, or what action you'll have to take to meet the materials management plan benchmark standards that will come later, and does not require any immediate spending from your grant funds other than to compensate for our activities. So again, no net cost comes from grant funds just for us to administer these plans. If you have any questions about this, you could go to michigan.gov/eaglemmp, which has more information on the materials management plan process, and there's a direct email there for questions. They get back to you relatively shortly. And then I'd like to invite you to an event that's coming up in October. The Michigan Recycling Coalition is holding its Upper Peninsula Regional Meeting on October 20th at Bay College, which is, should happen just after the end of the UP County Commissioners' meeting that's going on at the Island Casino that day. So we're hoping that we can engage a lot, all 15 counties, to come to this event. Both the Michigan Recycling Coalition and Eagle will be in attendance to discuss all the materials management plan process, upcoming funding, available grants, or grants that are available now, and different standards for developing drop-off sites or facilities to meet the benchmark recycling standards. Thank you for your time.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah. Okay, on the multi-county, I guess the question that I have is if we go with the multi-county and we're going to use our landfill here, do we have the capacity and how long will it last?
So in the current solid waste laws, there are import-export provisions that you had to define where waste went, and Delta County in its current solid waste plan defines that all of its waste is received by the Delta County landfill. So those import-export standards were repealed, and the materials management plan will have to identify the capacity of each county to continue to intake waste. We expect that Delta County would identify that its current landfill is, has the capacity to only take Delta County's waste, and it would continue to act as it always has been. It wouldn't accept waste from outer county.
Can I make a comment for you?
Please, please.
I'm on that board, and it's my understanding, don't quote me, that we're good for 95 years for Delta County waste with our landfill as it is right now, with the different cells they can make. A few years ago, it was 100, now it's up to 95, just for a ballpark figure for, where you can get some idea of where we are with that landfill. That's a long time.
Good.
Comes quick, quick for your young kids.
Thanks so much for your time and your service. Anything else, please, Bob?
Yes, this, your presentation pushes recycling. Our landfill and recycling have not done well financially for a long time. It's actually the losing side of that. So this sounds like it's going to be greatly increased?
So we do expect that the recycling rate will increase as it goes. The landfill currently has an agreement where it sends all of its recycling to the Marquette County landfill, which has the capacity, and it was just built three years ago, to accept recycled material from all 15 counties of the upper peninsula. So we expect that they have the capacity to continue to grow that. So no other facility will be required in the central region. We do expect that because the recycling rate will grow, it does cost additional money to collect and process material, and it's unknown what that will be, you know, 10, 20 down, years down the line, especially with meeting the benchmark recycling standards.
Well, what happens, well, what's been happening here is it's consistently losing money to recycle. Now, we're going to put it together and just have a bigger system that's going to lose money recycling. And it appears that what we have here with this is mandating recycling when recycling is, well, in order to continue the recycling, it has to be subsidized. That's, at least, that's been the history here. And I would, I don't know exactly what's happening at Marquette, or how that's working. We made that move to Marquette to help the hemorrhaging that we're having here. And I don't know what Marquette is doing. I haven't seen if they're being able to do something. So I am a little bit concerned about, it's a mandate that we're, we have, that will require the taxpayers to continue to subsidize. So it's not something that's market-driven, it's actually government-driven. So I'm not sure if it's going to, it's not done well to this point, and projecting it in the future by what's taken in the past, it doesn't look like it's going to do well in the future, but we're going to spend a lot more money doing what doesn't work well. That's my comment. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sir, thank you again for your time. I appreciate your time. All right, gentlemen, for the remainder of the workshop, we have two items that we are going to be discussing. One would be a discussion on our rules and procedures, and the other one is a discussion on per diem. Let's take per diem first, please. Commissioner Melner, did you have questions, comments?
Well, just a couple of things. I've done some research, and I know the pathways board, which I'm on, they pay $40 per diem per meeting. We have been at $20 for, I couldn't begin to tell you how many years.
Ever since I've been here.
Yeah, so, and I checked with Elger County, they were actually thinking of going up to 40. I don't think 40 is a base, but I'm actually thinking maybe from $20 to $30 per diem.
On the base, on the basic?
Yeah, just from your, from...
Because it's prorated for time, so...
Correct. And I had that written out, and I give it to Ashley on how it was supposed to be done. Do you have that, Ashley? Otherwise, I can find it.
Okay, any, well, she's looking, oh, go ahead.
And another thing I know I had on there was up to four, four meetings per day, or when we go to a MAC conference, we get a total of 50 bucks. I mean, we are gone from...
Three days, four days?
You know, four days total, almost 72 hours, and we get 150 bucks for being away from home and doing county business and all that time.
I like, this is, and this can be interjected at any point, anytime, please, just jump up. I like the, some of you guys are on so many boards and commissions. Right now, there's a ceiling. If you go to four meetings in a day, you only get paid for three meetings. And I think...
Actually, only, only up to 50 bucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think a commissioner, if he has, or she has, you know, been assigned to numerous boards, if you have four separate meetings that day, if we're going to continue with this, you need to be per diem for four separate meetings. It just sends the wrong message. I'm not necessarily sure. To let the public know what's going on, maybe you do, maybe you don't. We receive a monthly wage that is locked in, and I'm cool with that. I didn't do this for the money. When we attend a meeting that we are assigned to, or as a liaison or a commissioner, the landfill hypothetically, you know, there's a, you get the IRS stipend for mileage to and from your home, and rate, this is in addition to our paycheck. So that's the reason why I've been doing this for 13 years. I haven't seen that amount go up. We fluctuate with the IRS on the mileage rate. 20, 35, and 50, I think, is the rates now. And I will, I just want your opinion on it. Mr. Peterson, Steve, go ahead, please. This is what this is for.
I won't say that I wouldn't like to see our per diem go up. Rate at this time, though, I am concerned about wages throughout the rest of the county. And in my opinion, I think that we need to address those before we address ours.
I would agree, but it's a good thing to hear. Steve? You look like you're in deep thought.
I have mixed emotions about this. The biggest thing I see is if we do something with this, we should have some documentation that it's supported with the budget, the legacy costs from now until whatever it's changed again. And the other thing, I don't think it should go into effect till the next election. I don't think we should be voting into a benefit for ourselves...
I agree.
Until, I mean, we can, we can implement it, but it would be...
It's like, we're not, we're not like Congress, where we just give ourselves a hefty raise and...
Well, we are like that, but...
Why not?
Not for raises, but for just doing things that, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
And the other thing is, don't we have a compensation board that looks at this periodically every five years?
I've never heard of one.
No.
I've never heard of one either.
Other commissions and cities in that have a compensation board. They only meet maybe once or twice every five years to look at the standards that how things have changed.
Our base rate hasn't gone up, and our per diem hasn't gone up, and I've been doing this for 13...
Well, that's what I'm saying. We wouldn't be in this issue if we had that, that one set up.
The one I would like to develop, and I have a policy for your suggest, for your perusal, and it basically is purpose-driven, a thought, for your consideration. Basically, I want to do, and the only way that's going to happen is with this thing, is to institute a policy that says there are no guidelines currently for what a commissioner can or cannot bill for. And I have personally witnessed it until I went back and looked. There was a commissioner who went up, and this is years ago, to hотen to watch the UP or the state Christmas tree get cut down. Well, there's round-trip gas from Eskenapp at the IRS rate, and then, okay, that's fine. If you want to do that, go watch the tree get cut down, but don't bill the citizens for that. I mean, that was harsh. I was like, wow. And so if you're at a MAC conference, you should be compensated for your gas. Some of those are down in, next, Kalamazoo, or the, you know, so that's, that's one thing. But I really think, I agree with Mr. Peterson, we have to send a message to the employees first, that we are taking care of you before we take care of us. Mr. Barron, anything?
Well, I'm, this is something that Commissioner Mollner has brought forth. I think it's worthy of some study. I think Commissioner View is correct. It's something that we could be working on and set something up for the, after our, after the election of 2024. But I would think that in the process, that, you know, we deal with coal all the time, that that would be something that would be part of the final solution, where we don't have to readdress this.
That's the whole point of the, nice, that's a good idea. Anybody else? John, Bob?
Nancy's got something.
Oh, Nancy, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know too that other boards, like the Board of Commissioners, or Board of Canducers, their rates of pay are also, and the jury commission, are also based on whatever scale that you get, they get paid that same scale, so. So it's not only your, it's affecting other boards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Then we need to have an impact study on that, on what it entails outside of just the commission and everyone else, and where it fits in the...
How do you do an impact study and where...
By just looking at how many people are affected by it. It's very simple. I'm sure... By just looking at how many people are affected by it. It's very simple. I'm sure...
It doesn't sound simple. It sounds, but no, I'm glad if you know what I'm doing, that's good.
It's pretty simple for somebody that Ashley's capabilities are treasure and stuff like that. It should be.
Can you do an impact study?
Yeah, I can do an impact study. I mean, it would just be all the individual boards that we provide. And there, if there are monthly meeting or, you know, bi-monthly meeting and such, so.
Did you have to transfer funds this year for commissioners' expenses?
I, I had, did have to make a budget on them, yes.
Okay. There, um, what, what is the percentage that we are up?
Oh, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
What I would like, obviously, I'm sorry. What I would like to do is come up with a policy that would...
I did.
...govern how a commissioner submits bills for the committees that they attend. And I want to see if that creates any kind of difference. If it doesn't, then obviously, we're going to have to give some serious thought to. But I like your idea, Mr. View, of, of not voting on a race for ourselves. It would be for the next, the next board.
And we've also had two new commissioners, so, you know, they attended more conferences, just learning their duties. So, I mean, I do expect that on election years for an increase. However, I mean, this year was, it was a lot. I think it was probably a couple thousand.
Anybody else on, on the discussion of per diem?
Mr. Chair, I, I have my travel log voucher, and I was looking at it, and there's... I, in the last month, I attended seventeen different events. I billed for, I think, thirteen of them. The others were kind of, you know, like the fair and stuff with the, with the governor and that meal and stuff. I mean, we paid to go, we, we got paid to go there, but I, I didn't bill any mileage or per diem for things like that. I, I am, I am actually really involved with all the committees you assign me. And I attend them, and I even sometimes have to circumvent wages to attend the more important ones like Michigan Works and that up in Marquette, because it's right during the, the prime time of my workday. So I, I, I'm willing to lose money to get knowledge to bring back to the community.
Peterson hears your pain there, because...
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I don't think Mr. Melner's suggestion is unreasonable. I think we just need to approach it systematically. How many people does it affect? I mean, it, what are we on these boards for?
They're supposed to be the eyes and the ears of the full board.
So when we come here, we report what we, what's important from our, our meetings. Even though they're in the minutes, I, I feel I should give a small report on anything that might impact our commission and the public so they know about stuff.
And a lot of it is, you know, when you go to township, townships for meetings, you have to report to them what is going on, because a lot of them don't know.
Those of you who are liaisons to departments, this would be, if, if you're going to... I had a meeting with myself and Ashley and a citizen regarding an issue, and I didn't, I won't bill the county for that, because it's not a committee, and I'm not a liaison to that. So if you have a meeting that you end up helping somebody out, that, that in my opinion should not be a billable thing unless you're sucked into it and you, you know, go through administration and, you know, they request you to be there. It's a different story, because you, you guys who are with law enforcement or the, you get sucked into a lot of different meetings, and you don't necessarily have a choice. So I think we need, and we will, on the nineteenth, I will have a structure for the board to consider, and you may whittle it, kill it, or bless it, however you choose. On a final note on per diem. Then if there's nothing I would like to get into...
Just, just...
Oh, please, I'm sorry.
As far as liaisons and being to different, different committees and boards, I think we should review that. I'm not so sure we need to do as many as we do.
Well, that, yeah, I think that might, it's probably a good idea, but I mean, with each board is going to be different. So if we came up with a general structure or a general guideline as to what it is to be a liaison, you know, and, and when you can submit a per diem request, that'd be, I think, a good idea. Is that what you're saying is that the...
Well, we need, the, is, is it really necessary for, for us to have to be at all of these different boards and things that we are, that we are liaisons for? Is there, is like a board report being given? Example was recently, I went, so I'm the liaison to Soil Conservation District, and at their last meeting, or at least the meeting that I attended here last month, the, came a board report time, and it wasn't told any other speakers, but it was told to me that I was to report only things that pertain to the Soil Conservation District. So if that, they weren't, there was no thought towards what the rest of this board does. So I don't, I don't see why I thought the best thing to do for that situation, if they want to know what's going on, just make sure they get a copy of the minutes. Why should we have to go there and sit for a couple of hours and be told what we're going to say?
All right.
Mr. Chair, one more comment.
Please.
I, I thank you for appointing me to some of these committees. I'm very proud to serve the people of our county on these committees. And they have attendance problem and multiple ones. And they require me to let them know if I'm available for the meeting or not. That's, it, it's not a matter of are they needed or not. Yes, to function, for their boards to function properly, they need a quorum. And the commissioners are part of the quorum. The Health Board, the Michigan Works Board, you know, different boards like that. They, they demand us to be there. Matter of fact, even the Solid Waste Board, the last time we were there, I took that little trip down to visit my son before he flew to Germany, and they wish I had some, they, they wanted me to check in to see if we could have an alternate to go to that board, because they have a hard time voting on things when certain people are missing. I, I don't know if I'm...
We do have alternates. We can, it's...
On that board?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know the specific, but I knew we have alternates at the request of different boards. So if that's what we need to do...
Well, I, I don't want to make light of what we do on these boards, but I think we do a great service for, for the full county board and for the citizens. Because decisions made here may not come back to the citizens, but they do come back in other ways of services these boards offer.
I, I agree. I just think, you know, again, we'll visit the actual policy on, at the next meeting and talk that out. Any last questions or comments, please, on per diem issue? None seen. I will move on now to rules and procedures. This again is, we're not voting on anything. I want to bat some things around, get your opinion on stuff, your ideas. I would like to, without cutting anybody off at the knees, even close to consider that, try to streamline our meetings a little bit. And I have becoming growingly more concerned about trying to maintain order at these meetings. And the last meeting, I think, was a perfect example of that. And so I, I, I would welcome your input and what you have to, to say, if anything. Go ahead.
No, Bob was.
Oh, Bob, please.
It's the Bob thing.
The Bobs, all right.
The, yeah, the last meeting was a good example of some of the things that we've seen done, especially over the last seven or eight months. I, I believe there's, we need to look strongly at eliminating the public comment on board items only and replacing that with general public comments at that beginning of the agenda. It seems that we get a, is, we, we provide both, and by the time we get to the second, there seems to be, uh, crowd seems to get riled up, and we have difficulty. I believe if we move it up earlier in the session and just have the one, that situation as it took place the last meeting, where we were in the middle of public comment and we had to close, shut down for a...
Recession.
...recess, just to get things back in order, would be easier to deal with in that the public, as it stands, once they've had the general public comment and the board business afterward can take place, that the, if the, part of the audience decides to be disruptive, that we can have that removed, and we can continue to do our business. And we won't be detracting from the public, because they have it on YouTube. And also, there, there isn't going to be a session on the agenda where they would be able to speak. It would be much, much more streamlined. And two public comments are not a legal requirement of us. We've done it. I believe it's being abused, and will continue to be that way. But I, and it's challenging us to get it straightened out, and I think we should do that.
Okay, here's my opinion on this. You might, I don't want to scuttle general public comment. I don't have a problem with general public comment as long as, if I disagree with you, that doesn't mean you're wrong, and it doesn't give me the right to try to exclude you from anything. That's our First Amendment right. But we have to be able to do the business of the county. And so what I would like to seek is a policy where if things happen like they did last time, whoever the chair is, because it's not, his personalities keep it out of there, you have to go beyond that. The chair has to have the ability to maintain order of a meeting. Otherwise, it's going to turn into a chaos. Now, that doesn't mean you can't disagree vehemently. That's absolutely fine. But there's got to be a policy where the chair and then the board would determine if somebody was so out of order that they would need to be removed from the meeting. I think even the threat of that would make people behave a bit better. Telling people what to say, what they, I have no desire to get into that. And quite frankly, if I don't like what you have to say, that's where democracy begins. But I want, we are. We need a device to make sure that order is maintained. And I want to hear what, what you have, your questions, your opinions. Would you be open to commissioners' comments being limited to ten minutes? I mean, that's one small thing. That could help. I, I've, I'm not used to these four-hour marathon meetings. They're, they're, they're getting tiring. I mean, we, we got to do what we got to do, but I'm just asking...
Mr. Chair, are you trying to tell me something?
What's that?
Five minutes is long enough.
Five minutes, like, well, if we did yours, yeah, like John's style, it's, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I was just, Mr. Chair, I was asking if you're trying to tell me something. I don't have to report on what I report on. I just felt it was my obligation being on...
That's not a slight at you. I just wanted to...
Well, it is, because...
No, it's not. It's everybody. It's not...
Did I take over ten minutes last time?
You were close to a sitcom at a half hour, but I mean...
Well, no, no different than someone going to the podium as a commissioner and giving us a presentation on some good stuff, too. Mine was very informative in my mind.
And in my mind, too. I don't want to cut anybody off at the knees. And this is the point for this. I mean...
Yeah, I...
The commissioner can look at me and say, no, let's let the guy, I mean, it's not you, it's everybody. Uh, one meeting, we left, I think it was nine forty-five, we got out of here, and it was...
It wasn't commissioner comments that did it.
No, but I'm, I'm looking for ways to try to streamline the meetings, not to try to shut people up.
No, I know, I know.
So this is just a talking thing, so talk, please. Mr. Peterson, Mr. View, Mr. Melner?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll make another comment.
Sure.
I don't think I would be in favor of changing our, our public comment procedure. I, I really wouldn't. Matter of fact, I've even looked at some of the stuff I looked into where other counties on very hot topic issues, we would discuss them issues as a board. And just before we make a, a vote on it, if it came to a resolution where we're voting on something, to have a one-minute public comment on that exact issue in the middle of, of that discussion. I, I've, I've read about it.
I've seen that, and I, I, we have, we have that option if we were...
Well, I'm in favor of everything like that. People elected me to hear, listen to them, and that's, and I don't have any issue listening to them, whether it's constructive, positive stuff, even if it's false stuff, I, I don't mind. I don't mind hearing it. It, it'll make me a better commissioner, because I'll, I'll, I'll second look at myself and see, is this true or is this not?
I don't have a problem with that either.
Just like you. We always open our doors for these people to come in and, and, and...
My concern, my concern is that there are defined times that meet the Open Meetings Act and that we don't try to stifle anybody. But what Mr. Barron is suggesting is general public comment at the beginning of a meeting. And where I would disagree with him would be that and comments on the agenda items could be thrown in as one. You could extend that to four minutes if you wanted to try to do that. But again, I don't, if I disagree with somebody, that's fine. That's, that's their right. That's my right. But I want to try to look at ways to potentially streamline the meeting. That, that's a discussion point. I think we're at a point right now where it comes to keeping the meeting moving in a civil tone. We're going to need to do something about that fairly quickly. And I will have a procedure that I want you to talk, discuss on the nineteenth. And it's not an issue of the chairman having, that the commission has the say. So it will not be an issue of the personalities.
Mr. Chair, is this procedure something you're going to bring forward? Or is any commissioner able to...
Well, anybody can bring anything forward. That's the whole point of these. So if you have something you want to bring forward, I'd like to hear it, seriously, and maybe we can find things...
I'd like to see what you're, you're giving first, so I can get some type of...
Counter?
Not counter, but...
Work off of.
Well, to look at and say, yeah, this is great, whatever, but how about...
Okay, let me, let me establish...
I'm not going to have that time in a meeting to do that.
No, no problem. This is not a time for the audience to interact with us. And when they do, it puts pressure on people, and it changes the flow of the discussion. There are five elected people up here, whether they'll be here in a month or a year, that, that's God's choice. But right now, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that we do the right thing. And so if I take somebody in the crowd and I recognize them as being out of order, which is my right as a chairman, two or three times, and this person's not stopping, the policy would say that that person could be asked to leave the meeting. The board then, by the chairman, the board then would view a vote immediately, straight up or straight down, on the chairman's decision, and either back that decision or the chair would sit there and be overruled. That puts the power in the board's hands. And then, the only way that would happen, obviously, is if somebody was disrupting the meeting to where the work of the people was being jeopardized.
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't, I, I don't follow that logical, and I'm not trying to cause trouble. I'm trying to think of what we did when we had a vote of the chair of, of the board on an ethic issue. What happened? You know, it didn't have...
Did they have a board?
Yeah, we didn't, it didn't have any weight on that issue of conflict of interest, excuse me. My mistake. I, I...
It's fine, it's fine.
You know, we voted unanimously, I mean, not unanimously, but, but on a...
Four to one vote.
A, a majority vote, and it had no, no weight. We can't, are we going to have more weight for a citizen where the board says, hey, you're out of order? And it goes three to two, is he out of order or she out of order?
First of all, the board, the chairman would rule whether somebody was being out of order. That's the way that works.
And that's the way I like to keep it.
Okay, well, in that point, if the chairman decides that this person has to be talked to two or three times, I'm sorry, Joe Bull, you're out of order. Joe, stop it. Joe, you're out of order. Whatever, I'm going to get hammered for using the name Joe. All right, I... I need to be able, it wouldn't be Dave Moyles' personality, because that's what I'm going to be accused of. All right, it would be, all right, I, I recognize this individual is out of order. Maybe the four of you guys look at me and say, no, you're, you're all wet. We're not ejecting this person from the meeting. We have to have a policy to stand behind if somebody is ejected from a meeting, because then they're going to scream that I'm taking away their First Amendment rights. And I simply want a device...
That's what I'm afraid of, yes.
I want a device that protects the meeting moving forward so the work of the people can get done. I don't care if myself and this individual don't like each other. That's not why I'm up here for. But if this progresses at a level it was at last meeting, the deputy came over from the jail without even being asked that people were that disruptive.
And I, I don't even remember what happened.
I mean, it was just people being obnoxious. I mean, they were being rude.
Well, it just sounded like, you know, people just wanting to...
And there's a...
...drown their anger sometimes.
There's a time and a place for that.
Yes, I agree.
But I mean, if, if, if we don't control that, it, it's going to get out of hand. And so I'm not saying I want to suppress anybody. I don't want to stop anyone from talking. But I want an orderly meeting. That, that's just something, and I want you, the guys, to think about it and give me your opinions and, I, anybody, Bob, anything?
It's a great concept. I, I think it's something that we can look at.
It's something we should look at. I, I welcome all your comments.
Well, I do know Monomni County has five minutes for commissioners.
Oh, and the commissioners' comments?
Oh, now it's about us.
All right, I, I come with you, John. I...
Yeah.
Five is fine. But I'm not going to set some, Mr. Barron, anything?
I made my comments. I believe that's a direction, what I commented on is a direction that we're need to head. Because it's, we've, you've tried to deal as chair...
It's cute.
...over and over again with the audience, and Mr. View, Commissioner View said he didn't remember what took place at the last meeting. It was under public comment when one individual made, got up and commented and tore some, tore out a few of the board members. Another gets up and points something else out, and then the crowd got upset because of what that one person was saying about a couple of board members. That's not, that become, that became a situation where we had mob rule here. And I'm looking at how we...
That's exactly what I'm talking about right now, okay? You have a... You have a time to interject, and it is not now. And I'm sorry, that doesn't make me an egotist. It makes you out of order. And I have not been heavy-handed about this specifically because of the First Amendment. This has nothing to do with Dave Moyles. Please continue. And we will have order one way or another, folks. Sorry.
Yeah, so it's, uh, we have the opportunity, it's, it's upon us to make it a more orderly meeting, so that we don't have these kind of incidents, or at least try to substantially reduce them. Because, uh, we, we don't have to sit here and, uh, take this type of abuse, it's not what we're here for.
Well, to me, if somebody's at the microphone handing it, I don't have a problem with that. It's when the, the stones come in from the audience, that's when you get the, uh, the really disorderly meetings taking place.
That's what I'm referring to.
Somebody, another thing I would like you to consider is, the person talking at the microphone is addressing the board, not, not performing for the audience. So what I would like to see is a podium up front talking to the board. I think that would, um, that would eliminate the, the urge to turn around and entertain the audience. But that's just something to consider.
One more comment, if I can, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I cut you off.
Rules of public comment, item number four, the comments of the speaker must relate to business that is within the jurisdiction of the board.
That was written by a previous prosecutor.
No, I'm, 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 I don't know if we follow this.
No, we don't.
We don't.
We do not, because I.
So why change it? Just follow what we have. And then number five.
I would be accused of trying to thwart people's First Amendment.
No, it's, all right. And number five, the speaker shall refrain from making personal attacks upon any individual, audience, commissioners, administration. If we just, the minute they, they get out of line with them two items, that's when you can.
I, I can, I can enforce that, trust me.
But we don't.
Well, no, I don't, simply because I don't want to be accused of trying to stifle someone's First Amendment rights. That was the thing Pat Johnson handed me. You could get up here and talk about anything, and Pat didn't, whether he liked it or not, he believed that it's your three minutes, and if you're not using profanities or what have you.
Well, then we should take them out, because we don't follow it. Is that what you're saying?
Um, no, I, I would need your backing as a board to enforce it.
You have mine.
But we, we, in January, when we did reorganization, we already added a couple of these on there.
You had a profanity?
We had a profanity in January.
You, I haven't heard people profane too much. I mean, not, not at the microphone. I've heard some F-bombs coming from the audience, but I mean, that's, um, but no, if I have the backing of this board, I will, I will hold a strict line. It, it's not about me, it's about what this board wants. Go ahead, John.
And I think the reason you heard comments was because the guy, the person at the, the speaker was beyond his control rate here on one, one through six.
I'm, I'm not sure, you mean, he was out of order?
Well, he or she might have been out of order on, uh, number five, or number four, or number three. And that's what the audience is reacting to.
Sure, of course. And, but then, we have to define what constitutes a personal attack. I like the fact that it should, basically, the speaker should be talking about issues that affect the county.
That's what it says.
Um, no, but I mean, that's, somebody could say that, um, Dave Moyles was a crazy rotten SOB in his past, and it's affecting the county now. Okay, you can agree with that all day long. Nothing I did 25 years ago is affecting the county now. And I don't care if you disagree with it. So, one way or another, we're going to get this under control. You can either help us, or you can, you can be guided by it. If you will back me on it, I will be very judicious and walk a straight line in making sure that what this board wants done gets done.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we do back you, because we all voted for this, and I think it passed five, five zero.
Voted for what, sir?
This rules of procedure.
Oh, we, we have, I mean, we did add, as Mr. Melner said, we did add.
At the beginning of the year.
A couple of things.
This is our rules of procedure for this elected board, and we, we're just not following it. Because we're trying to be too nice, in my opinion. You know, just let people speak, you let one speak, and all of a sudden, from the beginning of our term as commissioners, you try to cut somebody off, and then they, they could come back and, um, show what you are trying to say, that you're playing favorites or something.
Sure.
And so we just, we just allowed it to get out of.
So we have a policy that we consider on the 19th that will be interfaced with our rules and procedures if this board decides to accept it. That, that would be what I propose, and if you guys like it, we'll employ it. If not, we'll then.
Well, my last comment, Mr. Chair, is I, I do not want to take and restrict any of the public comment periods that we have in here.
I don't.
At the time.
I don't have a problem with that, as long as we have an ability to control the decorum.
I wouldn't support that part, I'm just saying.
Mr. Peterson, you've been, go ahead.
Yeah, I have. Um, I, I get, I guess I don't disagree with, uh, with Commissioner View. Um, we've got these in place, and I, and I think I've talked about this before, um, we've got these in place, and, and we just got to get solid on them, um, and see how, maybe take some time, see how that works. And, but, but I also agree with you. We have to have some kind of policy when there's the outburst, like we had last week and a couple other times at different meetings. We can't have 20 people out in the crowd hollering and screaming, um, because they disagree with something we're doing. Uh, that's, that's what the public comment is for. So, um, I would like, I would like to see us tighten up on these, uh, procedures here, and, uh, and we can look at the, the, um, public comment. Um, but the big thing is, and, and come up with something, I guess, quite strict, when, when the, when the, uh, citizens get out of hand like they did last week.
I, I don't want to cut anybody off, because we're done here in like three minutes, but what Mr. Barron said was having your general public comment with your comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting. If you have to clear a room, which in my opinion is the nuclear option, then you've covered the county legally, because at that point, they will have had an opportunity under the Open Meetings Act to speak at a public meeting, to speak their piece, and then you go into the agenda, and if people want to disrupt, there's a price for that. And then, um, they would have to watch the meeting on YouTube if we had to clear the room. Then there would be no liability to the county. I don't have a problem waiting till the end of the meeting with general public comment. Somebody can be coming up here and calling me whatever they want to be, but there's going to be order in this room. And so, um, I just want to make sure that we do our fiduciary duty to protect the county in terms of litigious situations.
Well, I'm not, I'm not 100% against, uh, one public comment, um, at the beginning of the meeting, but, uh, that's something we can work out. But I definitely think that the rules and procedures that are on our agenda here need to be followed strictly.
All right, then I will, I will enforce them if you guys will back me on it. But I mean, it has to be based on a policy, so, and we will add to that. Anything last, before we move on to?
I, I have two other things.
Yes, sir.
That I hope we can review real quick.
We're going to have to, because we've got three minutes, but go ahead.
Are we timed, time limited on this?
Oh, yeah, 6 o'clock, we got to shut it now.
Is that, that the.
No, we got the public.
Okay, well, one of them is from Perry Lund, Judge of Probate presiding on, uh, did everybody read his letter in, uh, in our packet, or the one that we got last week?
Haven't read it yet, I just got it today.
Okay, well, he has concerns with, uh.
Yep.
The juveniles, particularly those that have been waived to adult court, and our, uh, he, what he's basically talking about is the sheriff will not incarcerate them, and Bay Pines won't accept them, and I guess there's a lot of money being involved, and I'm wondering if we have a committee or something that's looking at this. Uh, he said that, I mean, if you read, there's a lot in here, and I don't want to go into too much.
My suggestion was.
It's not working right, right now.
My suggestion is that we get ahold of, once we adjust, uh, the, kind of, we get ahold of Mr. Graham immediately and ask him to weigh in on it, because that type of situation happens down where he's at a lot. And I think he can give the counsel some, or the commission some very good counsel on that.
I think he has another letter tonight that we just received. I don't know what's in it. It was just given now when I came here, and all I'm saying is, I, I think we should look at some of these things, and I don't think we have to pay someone to look at.
We've already met with Judge Lund on this, um, and.
We did, when?
I met with Mr. Barron and Judge Lund two, three weeks ago.
Right after the, uh, we got the original letter.
Okay.
Right after what?
After the original letter was sent.
Original letter, let me see.
And so, um, it's an issue of, uh, I, I don't want to, personally, I don't want to turn this over.
Okay.
To a committee. I want to have legal counsel move on this fast, because, uh, a probate judge could assign a kid to go anywhere in the state, and the county would have to foot that bill. I mean, so I, I want to get the judges and the sheriff their backup as soon as possible.
Okay, the last minute, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, um, I do not like putting stuff on the agenda at the last minute, but the, uh, Delta County Solid Waste Board has.
Additions to the agenda, is what you're talking about?
Well, they do, but I don't know if we could add it to it and feel comfortable with everyone having an opportunity to look at what they're asking for.
During the agenda tonight, we, let's talk about that. Uh, but I mean, this is just for workshop and then the public.
Okay, I was just trying to get a, a consensus, because it's, a decision has to be made by the end of the week, or our, our, uh, landfill's going to be in jeopardy of not being able to.
Let's add it to the agenda tonight.
I don't want to vote on it tonight, though.
We can add it for discussion.
Well, I, I'm looking for a special meeting by the end of the week, even if it's just coming at 8 o'clock in the morning.
We're going to have to put that on the agenda to discuss the meeting anyway, so let me.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I brought that forward.
All right, very good. Now, I need a motion to go into a public hearing for the 23, uh, our next fiscal year budget, is that correct?
Twenty-four.
Okay, so I would need a motion to go into a public hearing on the 24 fiscal budget. So moved by Commissioner Barron, or supported by Commissioner Melner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous. This would be a public hearing for the budget for the 24 fiscal year. If you have any comments, you may stand up at the microphone and address the board regarding any concerns, discussions you have on specific budget of items. This is your opportunity for a public hearing, I've got to ask three times. And so, are there, I see somebody coming, so just. Yes, sir. Okay, after.
Hi, my name is Gary Gustafson. I'm from Rapid River, and, uh, I'm just going to get into this, because I only have three minutes, so. On September 30th, Delta County's Title 4D grant expires and will need to be signed by Commissioner Moyles, our prosecuting attorney, and by our circuit court judge. This grant funds a majority of the friend of the court operations. The Title 4D grant has many, many requirements that need to be met for the county to be eligible for the money. To be eligible to receive this grant, signatories have to agree to follow the grant guidelines, discrimination law, state and federal law. Signatories on the grant also have the responsibility to ensure the money is being used in compliance with grant guidelines and all applicable laws. The court claims they are giving 50/50 custody. The court also says parenting time is not part of custody, and that is dealt with in a separate hearing. Even if both parents have been living together and raising children, there is no guarantee they will get the same amount of parenting time if they separate. Circuit Court claims to have the right to deprive citizens of their right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness without regard for the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act of 1976 and the Title 4D grant guidelines. They also do not provide an attorney in the matter of life and liberty if you cannot afford one. The court changes the custodial environment without regard to non-custodial parents' rights and clear and convincing evidence that 50/50 parenting time would be harmful to the child. Even when granted 50/50 legal custody, parents are labeled either custodial or non-custodial. These are discriminatory labels made to describe a difference in rights between the parents. These labels are placed on parents without their consent and against their will. Clear and convincing evidence, proper cause, grant language, state and federal laws are being ignored.
Order, Mr. Chair. Is this pertaining to the budget?
If both parties are found to be.
Gary, we're not going to stop you for your time. You're okay, you won't lose that time.
I'm almost done.
No, you're, we'll give you more time, don't worry. Um, this is a public hearing, so we can do that.
Okay.
So, yeah, in answer to Commissioner Barron's, uh, question, this is regarding the budget for a friend of the court, I presume.
Thank you.
So go ahead.
Thank you.
I know, I get your point.
If both parties are found to be acceptable parents, then they should relieve, receive equal parenting time and equal rights. The county by law has the obligation to operate and fund the friend of the court, yet the county must also make sure this federal money is being used in a nondiscriminatory manner. Mr., or Commissioner Moyles, if you value constitutional rights, I don't know how you could possibly put your signature on something that tears families apart rather than working to keep them together and strips citizens of their right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Anyone who signs this without demanding change first will be knowingly and willingly participating in discrimination and grant fraud. This is also a serious problem for veterans. After serving their country, they are being denied equal parenting time, and their VA disability benefits are being inappropriately used for child support. The Supreme Court did rule that disability benefits could be used for child support. In Rose versus Rose, it was decided that a disabled veteran's compensation was considered income and could be used in child support calculations. It was also decided the benefits were intended for the veteran and his family. The VA does give around $100 a month per child in addition to what a single veteran would receive. The amount needs to be applied for by the veteran separately to receive it. It is then added to their monthly check as a stipend for raising dependents. This distinction in payments was not addressed in Rose versus Rose. The case also did not address a reasonable amount, what a reasonable amount was. If a vet only receives 100 a month per child, then how can the court justify taking up to a third of their disability? This puts disabled veterans at even higher risk for financial instability. It is, in fact, a violation of the Title 4D grant that funds the friend of the court. If the court is not happy with how much veterans receive for childcare, then maybe they should get off their bench and advocate for us. We want the ability to care for our children ourselves without having to live off charity to meet the unrealistic demands made by the friend of the court. The court does not care if our veterans see their children or if they can pay their bills. This instability is created by a discriminatory system that claims to own our children. Not having equal rights to family and financial stability after defending our country puts veterans at a much higher risk for homelessness and suicide. It's hard not to feel that veterans have been betrayed by our family court system. Commissioner Moyles, our circuit court judge, and our prosecuting attorney, if they have any respect for the citizens and veterans of this community, they will not sign the Title 4D grant without a concrete plan for equality in place first. Thank you.
Hold it. Don't go away. And a public hearing, do I, can I, can we interact with him or not? No. Yes or no, I can't? We can't? All right. I don't know either, but I think there's a specific time for that. I didn't want to stifle you. I know where you're coming from, and I can't say that I disagree with your points. I'm not entirely sure what I'll do at this point, but I do understand you serve this public, this country honorably in the theater of war, and we've stopped talking to you, but I understand there are some things wrong with the system. I'm not gonna, at this point, I think I need to talk with you and somebody else who understands more about federal grants, because I don't think we could tell the federal government really what to do. I mean, they do tend to hold everything, but.
It's like they're telling you what to do.
Well, I'm trying to give you an opportunity to just speak without, and acknowledge the fact that what you're saying, I don't think you're wrong. I'd like to get another chairman to say that. I don't know what I'm gonna do, but I am interested in trying to help you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you, sir. Okay, so, please, we had a gentleman with his hand up. You're next, sir, if you'd like. You have three minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Carl Lever. You were talking about getting extra money for your mileage and your stays. Why don't you try working that into your budget for 2024, rather than working it in now, put it in the 2024 budget? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. We are having a public hearing regarding the 24 fiscal year. If you have carry regarding the budget, it's, please, you have three minutes to address the board. The request going once. Three minutes to address the board on the 24 fiscal year and the budget. That would be twice. Anybody wishes to speak? Very good. Thank you.
To the budget there, it is.
Could you please identify yourself?
Barbie from Eskenaba Township.
Thank you, ma'am.
It is his duty, according to the 10th Amendment, it's your duty to the 10th Amendment, to say no federal grants. Federal grants are bribes. Corporate law.
Thank you, Barbie. All right, we have. Wishes to discuss. Any citizen wants to talk about the discussed points on the 24 fiscal budget, this is your last chance. Third and final call. Good, you cut me right on the last. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Tony Seymour. I don't see the point in triple stacking per diem. It's not like we're running across the Twin Cities or we're making mega distance here. It's not like you're going down to the MAC conference twice a day. If you're getting per diem to go to these meetings, it's because you're going to three different meetings in the same town. How much different per diem do you need? How many meals do you need him to cover? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. All right, anybody else for the 24 fiscal budget? Public guy, we need a motion to come out of the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner View. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are closed on that public hearing in regards to what you've just heard, gentlemen. Do you have any discussion regarding that? Those of you who spoke, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one comment. When was the full budget posted on the website? Someone told me to ask that question.
Admin, can you help us with that?
The full budget for people to oversee and come here to make.
I believe it was a part of the board packet.
Just today?
Right. This is just the public hearing on concerns, and then it will be.
One of what, three?
One or two.
One of two, I'm sorry.
So it will be presented back on September 19th with the full presentation, budget book, everything, and that will be on the website.
Can commissioners get a copy of that ahead of time on the proposed budget?
Oh, yeah.
It's a part, you have it right now.
Okay. I mean, I just thought it was odd, because I was talking to a couple gentlemen today, and he says, how can you make a public comment when I don't have what the actual budget is in front of me? And it's, you know, so I was, I'm kind of new. I was just trying to figure.
It's a process. I mean, they're gonna, you know, become, this is just the first of two public, I thought there was three, but there's only two. But there's obviously is a time that we would encourage the community to reach out to your commissioners, whoever they are. If you have concerns, they go beyond what you've heard tonight. We would need approval of the. The board meeting of 8:15 of 23.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor of approving these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. We have approval of tonight's agenda. Is there any additions?
Yes.
Under new business, Mr. View?
Yeah, under new business, I would like to. Discuss the Tanna compactor for the Delta County solid waste.
So under item number 11, under new business, it would be a discussion of?
The Tanna compactor for the Delta County landfill.
All right, yeah, let's, I didn't even see.
Oh, yeah.
Let's go, item 9.5, and so item 9.5 would be Mr. View's addition, and that would be a discussion of the county solid waste. Any other additions to the agenda?
I would like to add the court's data conversion work order.
Okay.
For our JIS system conversion.
Is that 9.6? All right. Item 9.6 would be the addition from administration regarding, say that again, please?
The court's data conversion work order.
Okay, the data conversion work order at 9.6. Are there any other additions to tonight's agenda?
I'm not talking about additions, questioning why we have item nine under new business.
Okay, so under item nine under new business would be the rescinding amendment or the easement. I think Mr. Barron's point is, why isn't this under old business?
That's more than that. Why is it even here?
Well, it was there because I asked for it to be there, and when I asked for it to be there, and I found some more research that. I did contact MAC on this, on their legal side, and asked them if that could be rescended, and they said yes unless it's already been signed and filed. And I later learned that it was signed that night and was recorded.
I will have it quiet in this audience, or I will personally contact the sheriff and have you escorted out. We are not gonna repeat what we did last time. I am asking you humbly to please refrain from your comments. If you can't, you're going to have to leave. You have a time that you are assigned during general public comment, you may speak. You're not gonna step over what Mr. Melner's saying, you're not gonna do over what Mr. Barron's saying. I'm sorry, if you want to talk, that will be your time. This is your only warning. Thank you. I apologize, sir.
That's fine. That easement was signed that night, and it was recorded the next morning, so the rescinding was, we can't get it done.
I'd like to hear what he's got to say. I'd like to keep it on there for discussions points, sir, but that's totally, if you, you know.
Well, a discussion of, it's a moot point that it was taken care of by the board. It has been recorded, and I don't know why we even have to have it on the agenda. It's a done item as we move forward. We had the materials, all the information we had. There was, we didn't have any, back in March, we did an easement change on this very same property, and there was no pushback on that whatsoever. And actually, the easement that was required was, I have a map here, that was required to go to the west so that lime timber products or timber could go to a couple of sections that were inadvertently left out of the original easement. This easement was put forward to us with excellent information. Yes, there's been some innuendo and.
We need to streamline the decision, so I'm not trying to stop your discussions, guys. I'm trying to. On the agenda or not, and so.
I believe it should be taken.
I'm bound by procedure here, so.
I'd like to see it stay on there and do some discussion. There ain't gonna be no hold on or anything else.
At that time, I would agree with Mr. Mel, Commissioner Mel.
Point is duly made, Mr. Barron. We have an amended agenda with two additions at this point. If you want to make a motion on a subtraction, that would be your call, sir. I don't want to be seen as trying to stop anybody from, but we do have a proposed agenda. Anything else? Okay, well, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
Mel's support.
Melner supports. Additional discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We have an amended agenda, and you will have that discussion shortly. I, thank you for your input. Okay, very good. We have. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded, administration. Do we have anything?
Yes, we have two communications received, two forwarded, and three, I'm sorry, that's the next line. Go ahead.
Okay, I need a motion to put that on order, on file.
I'll make the motion to put that on file.
Okay, received motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
Yeah, when I was reading them communications, how does the honorable ex-commissioner or state representative Doug Bovin, why are they mailed to him? Is there something that I'm missing here?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
They just haven't updated their contact list.
Who's supposed to update it?
Um.
It would be substantially outdated.
It depends on where, right, it depends on, I don't know what entity.
Well, my point is, make sure Mr., our chair gets on there. I think, because I think he was the chair, and these communications need to go to the.
And a lot of organizations, I just went through it with another organization. They had all of us listed, but they still had people that have been out for five years that were all solicited.
Yeah, they need to be purged on this information. It's all I think.
I've got it now. I was offline for. All right, very good. So we have a motion, and we have support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. All right, very good. Yeah, reports of standing statutory special committees and others.
There are three reports.
Okay, you have?
The Community Action, Solid Waste Authority, and the Public Health Minutes.
Okay, very good. So do we need to present those separately or just put them on file?
Just put them on file.
Okay, we need a motion to place on file, please.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner, to place these three minutes of meetings on file. Additional discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Those would be placed on file. Okay, now we have public comment on agenda items. If you have public comment, state your name, where you live. Public comment on agenda item, please, going twice. Okay, I'm sorry. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Actually, I have a point of order I'd like to ask you about. I'm the chair of the Delta Conservation District Board, and we brought a discussion to our last board meeting regarding item number nine. Would it be, would the board be willing to recognize me under item nine or?
Can't change our procedures.
You know what, actually, I'm sorry, I misspoke, David. As far as department updates, I'd be happy to do it then. This is often the time that Mr. Mattson addresses the board.
Not under.
Well, he does under department updates. He sure does.
This is, didn't we scuttle that?
No.
No.
We have, you have three minutes under general public.
But I'd rather address you.
General public, I'm sorry.
I'd rather address you under department updates as the chair of the Delta Conservation District.
I would move that we allow them. Is that a department or not?
That's not a department.
Okay.
Parks.
The parks and the forest.
That would be my dilemma here. I want to hear Mr. Kaplan as to say, you know, he's got on the agenda items, but what I'm trying to figure out, is this an agenda item?
This is general.
The parks is.
Department.
Agenda items.
He wants to.
It's not public comment.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't, I don't have the, I can't authorize that. So I'm, you have three minutes under agenda items, but I can't just.
Well, at the last meeting, Mr. Mattson came up and addressed you as the district CEO when you discussed and approved the easement amendment agreement.
He was on the agenda, correct?
He went under the agenda items, or he was on the agenda.
No, he was, he was on the agenda, so he had, you know, I would need a point of clarification here as to how to proceed, because I'm not sure. I'm not trying to shut Mr. Kaplan down, but I need to know that I'm doing the right thing. So I'm looking to your parliamentarian here.
Well, is he considered a department head?
Not at all. He's the chair of another, of the Conservation District. That wouldn't be a county department.
Who is our liaison for the Conservation?
Mr. Barron, I believe.
No, for the Conservation District.
It was Mr. Mattson, but that's no longer the case.
On the reverse end, you're for us to them. Who's for us to, or from them to us, I guess, would be the question.
Do we have a liaison from them, or is it Mr. Kaplan?
Well, it used to be Mr. Mattson.
Okay, we need to, and so the Conservation District has made a policy change regarding that. We'd need to know about it.
They have put me in charge of that.
I know that now, Joel. I'm trying to.
And it's true.
That would be the same as Mr. Mattson speaking to us or not, if he's in charge of that now.
Well, what I'm getting at is, we need to know who's doing what, especially.
He just told us.
I know that beforehand.
They did make a motion at the meeting that I was at.
Okay, so.
For that.
So he's our liaison, but, so we're still, we're still at general, or comments on agenda items, and so that's.
But he wants to speak as a department head.
I can't do that, because he's not our department head. He's a liaison to us.
Right, for the parks and the forest. So that's where our department comes in play.
Because we have the contract over.
I got you. So am I, am I out on a limb by allowing this or not?
No.
As a parliamentarian?
Oh, sorry.
Well, if we consider it a department head, yes, then you could do it.
I, I mean, I would assume we've let Mr. Mattson as the.
That's kind of what I'm getting from.
We did, as the parks come up and do up these, so as he's.
I'm not shutting down, Joel. I'm just trying to.
So he is taking the place of Mr. Mattson, and now I think Mr. Kaplan should be able to.
All right, very good. Proceed. I'm sorry.
Well, I should sit down until that time.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
This is public comment.
On agenda items?
On agenda items.
Yeah, okay, Christ. All right, very good. Now, for your patience, I thank you, are there comments on agenda items? This is call number two. That's not an agenda item.
Oh, not an, I don't think it's on, hold on, let me check.
So this, we're not an agenda item there, sorry, sir. This would be specifically what's on the agenda item.
Okay, it's regarding the easement of the Cornell property.
Okay, you can do that, but that, you know, that's, be specific, because I'm not gonna let somebody be, because it's on there, say, yes, there's a gate, and so whatever you're specifically bringing up, go ahead. You've got three minutes.
My name is Gary Gustafson from Rapid River, and I was told that during a meeting, a recent meeting, that Rory Mattson said that I threatened to tear down the gates in Cornell.
How is this easement related, sir?
Because he's claimed that that's, that's how that issue came up. So I just want to state for the record, I did.
Out of order, sir, please. Don't make me do that to you. I've got to have you stick to agenda items. So you would have to be easement specific. I'm trying to treat you with the best respect I can and still maintain order. I apologize for that.
I will sit down, but I do believe it is about the easement, because it was about me getting into the Cornell property through his easement. And he said that the issue because of the easement is because he alleges that I said I was going to tear the gates down, from what I've been told. But I want to state for the record, that is absolutely not true. I've had many conversations with the Sheriff's Department, the State Police, filed complaints about that gate being there. It was blocking handicap access, and it was a trust fund easement project, and the easement was with the property when the trust fund gave the money. And I am going to continue to push that issue because, and other issues I've been working with. Anyway, that's.
No, it's duly noted. You're specific about that.
I did not say that I was going to tear the gate down. I did say I could use the road legally, and I absolutely had the right to do that. Thank you.
I thank you for your time, sir, and then. May I hold your applause, please? All right, very good. Do we have any other comments on specific agenda items? Thank you.
Kelly Van Gogh, Open City of Eskenaba, I'd like to address unfinished business, item number one, municipal attorney contract. A few weeks ago, I had FOIA requested the municipal attorney's contract and found that the contract had never been signed. And the issue with the contract was that the original RFP that he sent versus the contract that he wanted gave different pay amounts. So I thought that was sort of interesting. The original one that was in the board packet in March, before there was even an RFP put in place, said 175 per hour, but I believe the new contract says 195 per hour. So I'm just wondering which one they're actually gonna go with. And then a comment that you made, Chair Moyle, just a little bit ago, saying, oh, as soon as we get this contract approved with Scott Graham, I'll have him look at the jail issue. I would just like to strictly remind this board that Scott Graham is to be used as a last resort, that you said you were gonna go through Lauren Wickman first, you were gonna go through your MMRMA attorney second, and that Scott Graham would be used, and it would have to be on a board vote only. I would just like to say that Scott Graham cannot make the sheriff house a juvenile, nor can he make the state take them. It's a legislation issue. We are not supposed to pay an attorney, county funds, to legislate. The issue is not unique to Delta County. It's a national issue, and until the laws change surrounding juveniles, nothing will change. It will continue to be a fight between the state of Michigan and the juvenile justice systems and the counties and the local sheriffs. Getting Graham involved is not a solution. This is a discussion for the sheriff and the courts to be having. Graham cannot make the courts or the sheriff do anything. Ed McReuben, other legislators, should be brought in as well. We do not have the money to renovate the jail to house juveniles. The sheriff and the contractors say the amount would be crazy. Unless the state wants to help fund the extra staff it would take to supervise the juveniles, then the county cannot afford it. Do not bring Scott Graham in on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, very good. General, comments on agenda items. Comments on agenda items.
I have one submitted by Dana Van Effen, and this is on agenda item number nine. The fact that Ashley already inquired if modifying an easement with Rory Mattson's benefit would put our county in jeopardy violating a grant tells me you are aware of this, yet you went ahead and granted it anyway. Before there was any clarification, August 11th, Ashley made the inquiry. August 15th, you granted Mattson the modification. August 17th, you were informed it, quote, "almost certainly would breach of the project agreement," unquote. Now we have the Attorney General's Office looking into this. The county should, could be responsible for paying back, paying that almost million dollar grant back because of your decision. How many, many, how many other decisions have you made so haphazardly? Thankfully, we have citizens like Joe Kaplan and Christine Williams and the Delta County Citizens for Ethical Leadership who are actually.
Get this stuff, keep her to the point, not going on a political rant, because if she was here in person, I'd be stopping her right now. So she's questioning whether the easement is appropriate and legal.
Correct.
All right, that's where it would stop. And as a chair, that's where I'll stop you. Thank you. Very, very good. No, that's commentary on agenda items specifically, please. And we will address Ms. Van Effen's comments during the discussion tonight. Please.
Barbie Clairema, Eskenaba Township, going on the public comment. Your policies cannot violate the people's rights. We, the people, are the private jurisdiction at these meetings. The board is the public, according to common law.
What agenda item?
And then Michigan Constitution.
What agenda item are you on, speaking about?
Public comment. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking that off. So I'm afraid you have to speak specifically on an agenda item that we're talking about that's on the. Yeah, we're not, we're not taking that off. So I'm afraid you have to speak specifically on an agenda item that we're talking about that's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, public comment. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I, thank you. Okay, general, brief public comment on agenda items, please. If it is an agenda item, you may speak on it. Last call? All right, we are shutting that down. Thank you. I appreciate those of you who've spoken. Very good. We have unfinished business. No, we have an administrator's report. I apologize. Ashley?
She's, here's scrums.
Don't take me interrupting you so personally, I'm sorry. So can you give us your report, please? Sorry.
Nope, sorry about that. The doors lock at 6:30, so in order for it to keep open for the public, I have to.
Be a jack of all trades.
Open it up. One moment.
So when she's ready, she will proceed with her administrator's report.
Okay. Delta County Airport update. Today, the airport advisory board met and discussed the progress on the EAS contract and the airport manager. The DOT, Department of Transportation, received two bids for the EAS contract, Boutique Air and Sky West. This contract is with the Department of Treasurer, however, or Transportation, I'm sorry. However, they consider the.
You're fine. No, you can interject on that all day long. Sorry.
I'll start over. Sorry about that.
I apologize.
Today, the airport advisory board met and discussed this progress on the EAS contract and the airport manager. DOT, Department of Transportation, received two bids for the EAS contract, Boutique Air and Sky West. This contract is with the Department of Transportation. However, they consider the recommendation from the Board of Commissioners. The airport board has not given a recommendation for the Board of Commissioners to consider. The airport manager of progress discussed was to interview two more candidates, one that was already a part of the airport board's top candidates, and one that is a new applicant. The board also discussed having an interim airport manager. However, no action was taken to pursue this avenue. I would also like to congratulate Robin Morrison, the Assistant Airport Manager, for receiving her airport manager license. The airport board.
You're out of time.
The airport board will be having a special meeting September 9th of 2020, I'm sorry, September 11th of 2023 at 8:30 to discuss the airport manager. On the regular scheduled board meeting in October, the new airport professional consulting will meet with the airport board to discuss the future projects. Delta County Parks update. The Finance Committee met with Nate Brockman and Mike Sikorski from the Delta Conservation District regarding the equipment that is held for the parks. The following items were discussed. Three lawnmowers, a 2010, 2011, and 22. A 14-foot trailer, log splitter, landscape rake, tractor, and wood processor. I commented on the log, the log splitter and the landscape rake was purchased in 2014 using Delta County Parks funds. This is to be verified by the Conservation District, since they were under the impression that those items were purchased with a donation from Senator Casperson to the Conservation District for the parks. The Finance Committee would like to send out an RFP for the tractor to be purchased from Parks funds from the 2023 fund balance. The Finance Committee motioned for a recommendation to have the Conservation District write up a proposal for the swap of the 2011 lawnmower owned by the county parks and the 2022 lawnmower that is owned by the Conservation District. I know I had mentioned earlier about a 2022 motor, lawnmower. There, there's two of them. So I just want to clarify that. They would also like to see a proposal for the wood processor. I would like to note that there is a job posting for the Parks Maintenance Position. The title for that position is the Maintenance Technician Number Two. The county would also like to see an individual that has carpentry experience to apply. So please go to our website, deltacountymi.gov to apply. As you had seen, there is an amended agreement, or I'm sorry, agenda. And on August 1st, 2023, the State Court Administrator informed Delta County that the state's budget for next year includes funding for the ongoing state support that will eliminate the JIS user fee. This will be a significant savings to Delta County. Tonight is the public hearing on the recommended budget for fiscal year 2024. And once we hear from the public, there will be a final review done this week and next by the commissioners, department heads, and myself, that a proposed budget will be presented with a slideshow and a budget book during the September 19th board meeting for approval. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Can we get a letter to our Assistant Airport Manager thanking her for becoming certified?
Absolutely.
All right, very good. I need a motion to put this on file.
I'll make that motion to put this on file.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would be passed. Very good. Okay, now we have minutes of the Finance Committee. Do you want those just put on board, or do you want to report?
I'd like to put them on file.
Okay, we have, is it a motion?
Motion to put those.
Commissioner Barron has moved to put these on file. Can somebody?
I'll support that.
Commissioner Peterson has supported that. Additional discussion on the Finance Committee minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those pass. And then we have Mr. Kaplan, if you could please come back up. I apologize. Department's updates.
apologize for the confusion. Not at all. Appreciate the opportunity to address the board. Joe Kaplan, I'm the chair of the Delta Conservation District. And I come before you on the recorded easement. That was, that was discussed and agreed and then recorded after the August 15th meeting. Are you aware of the letter from John Mays from the Natural Resources Trust Fund that was?
Yeah, we.
Okay, which talks about breach of, breach of, how they would view changing of public access to the Cornell forest land. They would view that as a breach of contract. At our last district board meeting, we, under Conservation District law, were allowed to request services, legal services from the Attorney General. And that's exactly what we did. And I can say from reading the amendment to the easement agreement, and also Mr. Mattson's testimony at the last meeting, there are things in this amendment to the easement agreement, and also his testimony, that are quite concerning to the district and anyone that has any familiarity with this project. There was alleged that Mr. Gustafson indicated that he wasn't the catalyst for, for making this move, but basically Warehouser had access to the forest for reserved timber cutting until December of last year. So Mr. Mattson had five years to address any mistake in the easement. And I can tell you from looking at the easement from Warehouser, that was a clean title. But looking at the amendment to the easement agreement, there are things in there about verbal agreements, and verbal agreements have no place in an ingress egress easement. So even though it's been recorded, typically when there's ambiguous language that contradicts itself in an easement agreement, that becomes a matter for the courts. So it's not a done deal, but I would advise you to take the concerns of the state seriously.
We don't feel it's a done deal. In fact, we've contacted Mr. Mays again.
Okay, good.
And Mr. Peterson is the liaison for that.
Yes, I actually sent some information down to Mr. Mays today in an email. He contacted me this afternoon, just before the meeting, and he is looking into it to see what, what we can and can't do, and how he can help us get through this with the county. But there are several different, he, he said there are different avenues for fixing the problem, if there is actually a problem with our amendment.
Excellent. And I would just encourage you to follow the, the move of the board to seek out advice of the state through the Attorney General to solve this, because it does reduce public use of that area.
We are not going to comment on that until we hear from him, correct?
Correct, yeah. He, he's going to get back to me. He's going to take it to his superiors and other people that need to look at it. And he said that he would not make us wait long. He would get back to me as soon as he could, and to come up and, or a representative of his to come up, go to the county forest and, and look at the situation firsthand.
Excellent. And since we're under contract with the county until the end of the year, I'd appreciate if we were included on that as well. Communicate to me directly. So that'd be great. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Gentlemen? Steve?
Yes. You showed me a different map than this. Why haven't we been given? We're lacking that information that you're talking about. At least I am. I, I don't know about the other commissioners. Remember, I showed you this, and then you came up with something different. I wanted to know which one is the one we follow by, because I.
The original one, the, the conveyance?
Well, it says it is original.
That's not original. That's just a submission. The original deed, the legal recorded easement between Warehouser and the county was executed on the 30th day of August 2017. It included a map and description and all the terms.
Can we, can that be?
That's, that was included in the recorded, the re-recording of the deed. So if you look at what was recorded last week, you'll see that it also includes, basically, the original was Libra 1193, and, and the recent one was Libra 1374. So the original conveyance of that property and the rights that you had to access that property through ingress and egress easements was conveyed by Warehouser to the county. Back in 2017.
I, I was just looking for that line of progression on using the proper information. So if that could be forwarded to all the commissioners, I would like it.
It's in your packet right now. The only change is Mr. Mattson has made himself the grantor to you regarding this, and to talk about mistakes and verbal agreements, and that map that he shows as Exhibit B, that was just a map that was submitted to the trust fund during the application. But the actual legal documents would be the conveyance of that property from Warehouser to Delta County in 2017 in August. It was a conveyance of the real property, and it was also a conveyance of an ingress egress easement from the end of a public road. That gave you an easement through 40 acres that was subsequently bought by Mr. Mattson after the fact. Does that, is that clear? So at the time that that easement was granted from Warehouser to you, Warehouser owned that property. And according to the amendment to the easement agreement, Mr. Mattson said he had a verbal agreement either with the county or Warehouser. I'm not sure. It's unclear. But it's in, it's in what was just recorded. It did not clean up the title. It muddied it.
We will be getting back to you, sir, with what we hear from Mr. Mays immediately.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions?
And that easement was also part of last week's agenda, too, the original, August 30th of 2017.
Yeah, it was re-recorded.
Right. No, I understand. I was just saying that it was also part, so if you received last week's board packet, too.
Or two weeks ago, right on the 15th?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. Do we have any other department heads? Any other department heads, please, wishing to? How are you? Welcome, and thank you.
Just prior to the board meeting starting, I had given out an investments reconciliation. It's just the last three months of investments, and I'm here for questions if you have any. If you don't have any yet, feel free to contact me later, too.
Look like this, gentlemen.
I know you haven't had much time to look at it, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, I, I had one. We had money transfer out of $250,000. What was that?
That was just the redemption of like a CD or an investment of some sort. And instead of reinvesting it, we cashed it out. I think it got put maybe into Michigan class, by the looks of it.
Did, did, does this investment, the reason I ask, I was wondering if that was the money that we loaned to another agency?
No, none of the money would have gone out of investments.
To the different fund.
Okay, well, I had a question about it, because it was in, in our packet that we gave that loan for 3%. We all agreed on it. I, I didn't know the other conditions on it, that it was for two years. To the extent, one payment each year with a total interest of $11,000. And when I did the math on that, who decides them figures? Because we lost money if we didn't have that money invested, just with the today's interest rate. We're losing one and a half, maybe 2% on the money we lent out. Is that customary?
Would have come from our main checking account, which the, I think the interest rate on that is somewhere around 2%.
So that makes us up a percent.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. You, you invest it in the account that pays the most, the most, if you're willing to give it away. You, you try to recoup where if you were to put it in a long-term, two-year investment, you would get to 4.5%, correct? Am I wrong? If I think of the figures?
You're not wrong, but you do have to consider the liquidity of your assets as well, and how often you need the cash. With that, we've got about 13 million invested in investments, which are longer term. Then we keep a certain amount in the checking account for things like the loan or other needs of the county.
I mean, I had a discussion about this with one of the, one of the constituents, and I said I would bring it up and find out if that was the best.
I think what motivated us was the undefined return, giving the chamber.
Well, it was a last-minute decision. We, we felt we should, emergency situation, and we, we went forward with it. But were them details defined after or before? That's what I was trying to find out.
Of the loan?
It was presented with a two-year.
At 3%, and also looking in that we lost money by.
It was all attached and presented.
I don't want to keep her here if she doesn't want to stay, because I could, I mean, ask a question specifically for her department, please.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't get to decide on like loaning money or anything like that. I only get to decide what to do with the money that we have extra. And so I don't know on that.
What department does that?
Well, you guys would.
We didn't.
No, we didn't. We approve what was presented to us. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't come up with the facts and the figures.
Any other questions for our treasurer, please, specifically to this report? Thank you again for your service and your time.
Well, and I have one more update. So we have the Delta County Land Bank is looking at getting some money from the state for eventually what would be a partnership with the Terrace Bay Group to tear down the former jail site. And so we just have a land bank meeting September 13th at 9:00 AM. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, very good. Do we have any other department heads wishing to report or question the board, or department head updates? All right, very good. General orders of business. We are on to unfinished business, and that would bring up the. Mr. Graham. There were some questions asked at the beginning, to those in the clarification, I think, of this. What is the difference, Ashley, regarding this contract? You had brought it up. I was unaware of it.
On the contract, I, so I guess the one that Ms. Van Goghven was commenting on was one that he just sent to us. It wasn't an RFP. So I mean, he can change the rates or whatnot from that original one that he sent.
An hour is the only thing I can remember. So I mean, if he started at.
But the RFP, what he submitted to us was 195.
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty much what I've always.
So that's the one we're going with.
So what is the, the adjustment in the contract? Is that?
Well, he had sent me originally one, but there was just some minor changes, and the changes was, one of them was like, he did 20 cents for copies. In an RFP, it has to be 15 cents. It was just minor. There was no large dollar amounts, but those were changed.
So literally, it was a 5 cent per copy issue?
Yep, absolutely.
All right, that's fine. Commission, do you have any questions regarding this?
This complies with the RFP that we had presented, so I just needed approval.
MMRMA will, as you know, take care of their issues as an insurance company. We have had our prosecutor issuing legal opinions, serving as a primary municipal counsel. In the issue of the judges and the sheriff, she's going to want to stay away from that. And we don't use Mr. Graham as a last resort. We use him when we need specific things. And so if this board has an interest in having him, he's not going to tell the judges or the sheriff what to do. He will advise on legal matters as to what he sees throughout the state. And I think he can potentially really save this county some money. As far as $195 an hour, that is ridiculously cheap. He hasn't billed this county for one dime. And so I, I really don't know if you have concerns, but if you do, now is the time to discuss them as we look at this contract.
Has he worked for the county already?
He has reviewed some things pro bono. He's done it as a favorite of the county. He's done it as a favorite of the county.
And?
That's free.
Nobody does nothing for free.
I disagree. He did some things for free. He's not submitting bills. He, he's not trying to butter us up. He's got, he's got all sorts of work down there. He's here because I asked him to be. I asked him to throw his hat in the ring.
I see we have the prosecutor who's in the back.
Yep, she's, I'm glad she's here tonight.
And I like that. If it's okay with the board to ask her a question if?
Lauren, would you please come up? Welcome. Thank you for your time.
Do you have a problem with handling anything with the courts or the sheriff department?
Not at all. I deal with it every day. In fact, I was dealing with a juvenile issue in the midst of this board meeting by telephone. So it's something I deal with on a daily basis. I've reviewed the law. We are trying to find workarounds that won't cost this county a significant amount of money, but keeps the citizens safe. And between myself and Judge Akonomopoulos, we've, we've worked out a potential plan. We just haven't had, quite frankly, the opportunity to try it just because we haven't had a juvenile issue pop up and honestly, until today.
So you're comfortable with what could be heading towards, you know, two very powerful positions heading into possible loggerheads? Are you, do you? There's different ways to view this. And I want to view this as a way, if you're not comfortable with something, then we proceed additionally. I would, I just assumed it was a conflict of interest. But if you're comfortable with it, go ahead.
I have to work with the courts. I have to work with the sheriff. I usually am stuck in between them from one standpoint or the other. But our office, representing law enforcement interests as well as the citizens' interests, has an interest in what happens when we have a juvenile issue pop up that's been discussed. I've reviewed it numerous times, as has Ms. Wickwire, our chief assistant. And it's something that we feel pretty confident that we have a very good understanding. I've talked to the sheriff. I've talked to the judges. We've had meetings on this. This is not a new thing that's popped up. Unfortunately, there's, and I can go on for a while about some of the other issues that go along with what I believe you've received in a letter. It's not as simple as it always appears. And that's something that I have to look at. And I do look at all avenues, not only from the citizens' law enforcement, but also how the justice and the court procedure goes. And so bringing that all together, I believe I'm actually in the best position to bring that all together as opposed to someone else or either the judges or the courts, the judges, the courts, or the sheriff in that regard.
Very good. Do you have, I have you up here. Would you like that extra layer in case you have to recuse yourself for anything in the, in the future? Or are?
That's already built in by statute. I am civil counsel by statute without, until or if I decide I have a conflict or for some reason the board decides I can't adequately represent the board, whether that's a complicated litigation matter that might be coming up that my office simply just does not have time to handle or the board views I have a conflict of interest that I can't adequately do it. But that would require a vote of the board from my review of the statute. But it is already built into the statute that if there is a conflict, that the board can seek out civil counsel.
So if I may?
Please.
So to have this, to have Mr. Graham just sitting under contract but not charging us anything, that's not any inflection or any problem with, with you in case you have to recuse yourself or something? To have him sitting there ready to come to work, that's not a problem?
No. And my only issue has been, the same issue that's been on, or has been up since the beginning, is a progression. I don't want myself to be working on the same thing Mr. Graham's working on because one, that's double billing the county in essence. And two, what happens if you have conflicting interests or conflicting opinions? That, I think, becomes an issue at that point.
You have been given precedence or preference as, as, as we seek opinions. We have a policy on that where it would go to you first. And then MMRMA is a totally different bird. And then if we have to, then we go to Mr. Graham. It's not a last resort type of thing. It's just if we need him. So him being on, there's no retainer. There's, you're, you're fine with this?
I, I think it would be appropriate to have somebody on the back burner in case there's an issue that comes up.
Sure.
But I think outlining that, making sure who's the one who's going to be directing that. And I understand the policy right now allows for Ashley to make certain judgment calls in the moment as issues pop up day to day. I think we've worked that out. We have a good working relationship as those things pop up. But obviously, there's going to be more complex litigation things, more complex legal things that are going to be presented to this board that the board would need to take direction on or ask Ashley to take direction on. And so I think just having a set outline for that would be appropriate for everyone involved.
This is not related to, what kind of increase are we looking at this year for your services as far as the opinions? I mean, I know what we were at last year. Do you have a number in your head?
So I actually was running numbers this afternoon. So it's very appropriate. They're going to be rough numbers. And I'm not a numbers person, so I'm going off memory only.
That's all right.
So the last, I believe, five or six years, we have charged $6,000 as a stipend for our legal services. I have noticed a significant increase in this calendar year, looking, starting in January 2023. Going back to last fiscal year, there was one piece of litigation, in particular, the Garden Township Solar litigation, that I put in approximately 35 hours conservatively on. If we were looking at, and at that point, I had 175 that I thought it was, Mr. Graham was going to be billing, so I use that as an example. Those 35 hours billed at 175 hours, if I billed per hour, we came out to $6,100. So right there, that ate up the entire stipend if you want to look at it from that standpoint. If I billed for every hour that I put into civil issues as they pop up, which I roughly estimated were between 12 and 15 a month between myself and Ms. Wickwire, we'd be looking closer to $32,000 for the year, just billing per hour. So I'm looking at doubling my original stipend, but it's still less than half of what it would be if I billed per hour, so about 12,000.
12K?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Lauren?
Mr. Chair, my question would be, we're going to be voting on retaining this person?
No, no, we're not, we're just approving the contract.
But if something came up, are we obligated to use this person?
No, no, not at all.
We can sidestep him if the issue had?
He's not to be sidestepped. He would be, and I'm not going to say.
Is it mandatory to use him?
No, it's not mandatory. We have, this board has shown a preference to go with Lauren. She's for an immediate opinion. We've used it several times. MMRMA is its own goat. It's off by itself, taking care of its issues. If she wants to recuse herself or the board feels like she needs to recuse herself, it would be more a matter of her doing that, then we would move in the direction of Mr. Graham.
But we're not obligated?
Not at all.
Maybe I can rephrase this for you, Commissioner View. If it gets to the point where I've recused myself, do you have to go with Mr. Graham?
You do not. No.
You can pick someone locally or anywhere that's?
Wait, 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 if I may.
Yes, please.
If, if we're going to bounce, talking about bouncing around lawyers, then why have a contract with Mr. Graham at all? If we got a contract with Mr. Graham, then he would be our, in my opinion, he would be our attorney after Ms. Wickman. Or, yes.
On issues that we're not going to use Lauren on absolutely.
Yeah.
But that would give Ashley someone to call. That doesn't mean that we are obligated.
But, but we wouldn't, but we would use him. We wouldn't go use one of the local attorneys.
I think it would be in administration's best interest in serving the county to have somebody to go to as opposed to throwing out?
Yes.
You know, a goal or another RFP. A lot of this, I think, this is another discussion. If we were looking at, I appreciate your time, Counsel. Thank you very much. Any questions, final questions for Lauren? Thank you very much for coming. Okay, so now we're back at, at the issue of discussing this contract. We are not bound. I use somebody that we've got waiting, but that's only in the case that we're not using Counselor Wickman or MMRMA doesn't chime in. It's totally up to the board. I'm not, it's your pleasure.
But?
Go ahead.
At the beginning, I, I thought we had a comment that we were going to have him look at this juvenile delinquent thing of being charged as an adult. But now it looks like we don't need him for that.
No, we don't. Because Lauren's?
No, but you were already, if we pass this, you were already going to be?
That would be my suggestion, but that's a suggestion. If we have a counselor here and we've been going with her, then we're going to go with her.
My, my issue is, what happens if she wasn't here? You know, Lucky John noticed her so that we got that settled. I don't know how you give a contract to somebody and not have?
We would rely on administration to make that decision. This is simply another tool in her box as an administrator. And she's, as Lauren and Ashley said, she's got a good working relationship together. So in the event that Ashley feels she needs something different, she can do that.
With all board approval?
Up to a certain amount.
Up to a certain point, yeah. But no, we're not, it's not free, free willy or, you know, it's?
Is that in the package tonight?
Is what in the package, sir?
Voting that amount.
I, I think that was done in a previous board meeting. Was the amount was that?
Yeah, a policy. I think it was up to 2,500, wasn't it? Simply going to, and as you can, since that was, she hasn't spent a bunch of money.
No, no, I'm not questioning that.
Okay. So we need a motion on the floor to accept the 5 cents a difference? Is that it? Or 5 cents a page difference?
The motion to accept the contract?
Yes, that would be the?
I would put forth a motion to accept the contract.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
I'll support it.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, very good. So 4-1, thank you. Moving on to business. Item number one would be the payment of our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amounts allowed. Grant total of bills, $1,916,127.17. Commissioner expenses, zero.
We don't have any money left. All right, I'm, I'm reading a motion to pay her bills.
I'll make a motion to pay her bills.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion? Oh, it's a roll call. What the hell's wrong with the house? Sorry, Nancy. Roll call, please. Sorry, guys.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Yes.
And Moyle?
Yes. If that passes. Next item of new business would be the, the four, what is it? EMPG work agreement?
Correct. This is a work agreement with the Michigan State Police that shows what planned activities are being done with our Emergency Management Performance Grant. Paul Guyer is looking for approval for, from the commissioners for the presented work agreement.
We would need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson and supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion? Mr. Guyer is here. But any? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir, for your services. And you have any, any comments or questions for the board? Any questions for Mr. Guyer? We can let him go.
I guess I could add just one thing that included in your packet was the job description that I'm required to submit to the state. And that is something you approved, the change to it last year. So I didn't think there was going to be any changes again this year, but they always look for the updated one. And that changed when I stopped being the coordinator for School Craft County. So the only other thing that is a new requirement of the grant is that we have to declare, and I say we, the county has to declare the percentage of federal money received as a total of our budget. That's one document that I have to submit. And that's, I'm going to work with Ashley to submit that, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir, very much. Thanks for your service. All right, what is, the MERS revised 457 participation agreement is item three.
Yes. It was brought to my attention that the changes during the Road Patrol Union Agreement was not reflected in the 457 program with MERS. So you'll see the attached resolution that has the amendment and needs to be approved and signed by the commissioners.
Gentlemen, we need a motion?
I will make that motion that we approve MERS revised 457.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item does pass. Sheriff's request for the third officer position at the courthouse and the transition plan approval.
Do you want to speak on that? Okay.
Sheriff, welcome.
Approximately a year and a half ago, two years ago, I applied for a grant and the state got $170,000 for training with that grant to send three officers from Corrections to a police academy. Two of them went to the road. The third one, we would like to start training the 10th of this month for Road Patrol. And that employee should be paid out of Road Patrol. Then once she's trained, would be transferred to a third officer in the courthouse. I expect the equipment for the courthouse to be in place. The grants were approved on the equipment, talking about the package scanner, body scanner, so forth, beginning in January. So I'm looking for a beginning of January timeline for a third person added for the courthouse and a temporary additional position within the Road Patrol for training purposes.
She has to have, or the individual has to have how many weeks of field training?
Right, three. I, I says three months, minimum of three months, usually three and a half months, which that would bring us to the end of December. So that's why I'm asking for a January start on the third position at courthouse, expecting courthouse would be locked down at that time or down to one entrance. And all people will be going through a scanner and all purses, so forth, going through a package scanner.
So the motion would have to include a third officer position at the courthouse as well as approval of the transition plan?
And I'm sure we're budgeted for that, for, for everything because I didn't get a chance to look at the full budget. But that's, money's not an issue on that security package.
Part of the DR?
It was part of that whole presentation that we gave. It listed all the different equipments. And then the officer was also included in there.
But the legacy costs are still covered, right? I mean, it's something that we need to do and we can afford to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Gentlemen?
I'll, I'll move that we, we approve that?
Third position.
Third officer and the temporary Road Patrol training or whatever it was for another officer?
Additional officers for Road Patrol for training purposes.
Yeah.
Starting the 10th.
And the transition.
And the transition.
That is a motion by Commissioner View.
I'll support that.
Supported by Commissioner...
Did we cover everything?
Peterson.
And then with that, now that that individual will be moved, we need to post and fill for the correction position that is now open.
Very good, then, will you amend your motion to post and fill for the correction position that is open?
I will add that as the administrators suggested.
Does your second substantiate that as well?
Support.
Very good, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Twenty-three winter tax rates.
I would like to motion to table that.
All right, so...
I'm sorry, not motion, I can't motion, I meant I would like a motion.
I need a motion to table?
I'll make that motion.
Peterson, Commissioner Peterson moves.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron, all those in favor of table, they can get, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. Okay, visit Escanaba loan.
All right, during conversations that I had with Visit Escanaba, it was brought to my attention that they would like to not make monthly payments, they just want to make two payments. I'm sorry, two payments, one each year. So this will change the amortization schedule, which was presented to the board prior to, but this new schedule, we will make an additional $3,400 plus on interest. Because they were just making monthly payments, which reduced the interest that we were making.
I believe the reason that is, is, I think it's once a year, they get royalties from the local hotels and that, and that comes in one time a year, so I think they are looking to make that payment at that time when that money comes in.
Need a motion?
I will make the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the suggested two payments, supported by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron, additional discussion. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I just wanted to, I guess this person wanted me to ask that question because I guess it did change from the original thing we did, it was a monthly payment, correct?
It was just a monthly payment.
Yep.
The interest rate did not change?
No, 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 but all of a sudden it's, okay.
So I presented it.
I hope he's listening or she's listening, so she gets the answer.
She knows that you moved on it, yeah, okay. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That would pass. Early voting equipment purchase and grant approval.
So proposal two of 2022 requires every jurisdiction throughout the state to provide nine days of early voting. Okay, so that's, that's quite a hardship on the cities and townships to provide, each to provide nine days of early voting. So I got together with, after meeting downstate with the county clerks and the Bureau of Elections, I met with the city and township clerks, and we decided we would do a county plan, and we would have two precincts, probably at the same place, provide for early voting. And in order to do that, we need extra voting equipment. We need extra tabulators and ballot on demand equipment, and that will run about $25,000.
Which fund are we pulling?
Well, this would come out of the, I can't think of what it's called.
Elections fund?
No. It would come out of the general fund. But I am writing for a grant that has to be submitted by September 8th, so we should be reimbursed for all of those costs. So we're going to pay for it, and the way the state works is they usually pay at the end of the fiscal year, so they'll hold on to that money until the end of, until the end of, you know, until September of next year, sometimes in June, sometimes they pay in June. But they'll, they'll hold that money, but we need the equipment, we have to have this in place for the February or March, they haven't decided the date yet, presidential primary, so we have to provide that. And so we have to gear up for that, we have to get the equipment. So what I'm asking from you is that, that I be allowed to purchase the equipment and that we would be reimbursed by the state.
So the motion would have to be allowing the county clerk, the noted equipment, and after then we would be reimbursed by the state with this. You have questions for Nancy?
No, I would, I would move that we do that, I did read your report, and that's exactly what, I think it's fair, we got to, you know, upfront, we got to pay for it, we'll get it on the ballot.
It would be much more expensive for each of the townships because they'd each have to purchase the equipment.
Where would the precincts be?
We're looking right now at Bay College, but today, the clerk from Wells who wasn't able to attend the original meeting, she volunteered to use Wells Township, which their setup are ready to be precincts, and, and we could lock up our equipment, they have a safe there. At Bay College, we would run into some security issues of where we would be able to lock up the equipment every night, so, for nine nights in a row. So we're going to look at, and there were other, a couple other suggestions, the Civic Center and a couple other places, so we haven't decide yet, haven't decided yet on where this is going to be, but then it will take six election workers every day, we'll need to man this, so for nine days.
Are these different machines, we can't use machines?
We can't use the current machines because they're going to be used for, at the precincts on Election Day, so we have to have separate tabulators, and we have to have the touchscreen, right now they're, they're called the voter assist terminals, but we can get those, the new ones allow for you to print ballots, ballots on demand. Otherwise, we'd have to have ballots, you know, a stack of ballots from every single precinct, that if you came in from Glotstone, you could vote, you know, a Glotstone ballot, and Mr. Melner came in, he could vote a Brampton ballot, so, so we have to be able to print them on demand, and that's what we need the new equipment for.
So you've moved, haven't you, Commissioner?
I did, yes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner View and support by Commissioner Melner, additional discussion. If not, all those in favor, go ahead. No?
No, I had a, I had a question. So the, in the county, the, those that want to vote nine days early from across the county would just go to Wells?
Yes.
And then they would put in their, their information would have to be there?
Yes.
And then that, the ballot would be printed and they'd be able to vote.
Yes, we will have electronic poll books at the, at the precinct, and we would be able to look up where they're registered at and, and give them the appropriate ballot.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, thank you very much. RFP for, what is it, the PTP Electric and Water Award bid. Do we have those bids?
The county received two bids, they are presented in your next cloud for each project. Tonight, we're not looking for approval as of yet. According to the RFP, the apparent little bidder will be evaluated for responsiveness and responsibility. The successful bidder will primarily be determined on best value and start date. To fulfill these requirements, the Conservation District Manager and the Delta County Maintenance Director will have a meeting with the bidders prior to the award. So we'll come back to our final, so we just need to table.
So this item needs to be tabled until they come back to us?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Moved by Commissioner Melner. Supported by Commissioner View, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will table that motion. All right, now, item number nine, which is a discussion on rescinding the amendment of the easement to Cornell.
Well, like I, like I started to say in the beginning, I did contact MAC, Michigan County Association of Counties, and talked to their legal department, and they said we could resend it if nothing was signed and nothing was filed. So then I started digging a little farther, and I found out that, that easement that Mr. Matson talked about was signed that night, and he filed it that morning, so we can't resend it on that. Since then, I now hear Commissioner Peterson said that he's been talking to John Mays, so that could change things still.
Well, we're, obviously, we're waiting to see what Mr. Mays says, because that's, people automatically just jumping the gun and saying that, you know, we're going to get stuck with a 700, first of all, it's $825,000, it's not 750, and we asked for some assistance in settling this issue, and it's, I think we should wait until we hear back from Mr. Mays, because it's all going to be speculation until then. So, but clearly it's being done in the light of day, and there's, we're not sweeping anything under the rug. If you, if you have questions, let's get to them, and we'll go from there, but I, I don't think we can answer much until we hear back from John Mays. So gentlemen, if not, we'll move on to the next business. Go ahead, Dolf. All right, very good. We will be getting back soon, as we hear from Mr. Mays, he'll hear from us. Okay, now we have items 9.5 and 9.6. 9.5, please. That was Steve, that's your...
Yeah, I received an email today from Terry Ravatory Administrative Manager of Delta, DSWMA, desperately needing this TANA compactor that their board, their authority board, or I don't know if they're authority, but the board approved, it costs 962,572. In this letter, she cannot sign the purchase agreement with the bank to borrow the money, they're putting $100,000 down on it, until she receives a signed resolution by the board, and if we, if she doesn't get it this way, it'll curtail.
Does something like this have to go to finance, because it's not coming out of our...
I, I'm not asking it to go under finance, I'm asking that...
I understand that, I know what you, I want to give you what you need, I'm just, I'm procedural.
What, I don't want nothing, I just want to be able to make a decision on this by the end of the week, and I don't want to just give this letter to everyone, I want them to think about it for a day or so, and then...
That's a lot of time.
Well, I don't know what...
I'm joking.
I don't know what the requirement is, just to have a short meeting to discuss this and vote on it, once everyone's up to speed on what she's asking for. Because the application's here, the letter's here, and she just...
One point that I would like to make is if this is such a time sensitive thing, we should have heard about it by now, but I mean, I, let's support them, I want to, but we need to convey to them that if something is time sensitive, they need to be more... I'm in with, anybody else, please, speak for peace.
So, is this costing the county any money?
No, they have their own budget.
Okay.
Right, Ashley?
They do have their own budget, and they will be paying for it, however, if they default on it, it will be the responsibility of the county.
Or co-signing, basically?
I'm not saying I'm against it, it's just, that's a, that's a big, big number...
Change?
To come up with, and even between now and the end of the week, you know, I mean...
They're borrowing the money, you know that.
Oh, I understand it, but as was said, if they default on the loan, then, then we're up on it, I just, you know, I...
They bought one five years ago for about, not quite as much, but, and they didn't default on that loan.
No, I think if they defaulted, it would, we'd have bigger, I mean...
We'd have bigger problems than that, that $900.
Slightly.
What is the, why is there a rush to have this right now?
All right, let me, let me, let me re... I cannot, let's see. As our discussion on our phone conversation, Upper Peninsula State Bank is asking the Delta County Commission to pass a resolution backing us on our financing of a new TANA 380 compactor that the landfill definitely needs to function on a daily basis. The purchase price is 962, we'll be putting $100,000 down. The total we need to finance is 862,572. I cannot sign a purchase agreement until we receive a signed resolution, and if we do not get the resolution this week, we may have to wait till December to receive a compactor. Your help along with the rest of the board and Ashley would be greatly appreciated.
I guess what I would ask is if this is a potential financial liability to the county, do we need to send it to the finance committee? If we don't, then I, you know, we can resolve, but if it's got to go to finance, she needs to be told that we need things, we can't do a last minute...
Were you ever on a finance committee?
Barron and Peterson are...
Five years ago, did it come to the finance committee?
I have no idea, I've been on it...
I wasn't here, so I don't know the process.
I can't remember if we did or not.
Question is, okay, that they wouldn't be able to get it till December, correct?
If they don't sign the documentation to get it on order this week.
All right, is, is the one they have failing, or can you run it?
Very, it's, it's...
Is it dead?
They have loners in there and everything else, it's, it's been a limit. It's failing. I'm on the board, I know, they've been looking at this for like two months.
Can you convey in strong terms that, you know, this last minute, I mean, we need, we needed to hear about this previous? But I, I'm not, we got to support the landfill, or we could be up to our elbows in garbage, literally.
Actually, they didn't, they didn't have any decision on this until the 22nd of this month.
The last month.
Of August, yes, the 22nd of August at the last meeting.
This would be the natural progression on that, the next meeting.
So it wasn't that they waited, they just...
I didn't think they waited, I just, it's just the way things stacked up. Guys, I don't have a problem with this, they're not going to default.
I hate having things come in at the last minute like this, but...
I'm not asking for that.
I'm just saying.
Yep.
But I, I guess if they've got to have an answer by the end of the week, I don't know if there's any way we can just take care of this tonight, have it done with, it's probably to the parliamentary meeting, whether we can handle it or not.
You want to handle it now, or do you want to have a meeting?
I, I just, we're going to pass it anyway, so, it sounds like.
You're on that board, Mr. View, do you want to make the motion or not? It's a resolution, essentially, we're co-signing this.
I, I would like to, but it goes against my principle on having something, something coming at the last minute.
I'm not going to ask you to go against your principles, seriously, I'm not going to...
I do not like this, even though I thought, here was my, my, my line of thinking, because I seen it happen with the board before. It's something where we all can get the documentation, the order form and everything on what they're doing, they could call up Terry, ask questions, call up Dave, the supervisor along with Terry out there, and just get whatever information they need to feel comfortable voting on this, and I thought, what's the time limit for calling a special meeting at last 10 minutes? How many hours do we need?
Eighteen hours we have to...
All right, something can be done by Friday, is all I'm saying, and it doesn't have to be like at 5 o'clock at night, before we go to work, we come in 7:30, 8 o'clock, just go. But at least give all the board members, if they so desire, an opportunity to ask them questions, call these people up, but I'd like it done by the, the end of the week, so...
How many of you would reach out and, and ask questions?
I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest with you, like I said, are we, who on the board right now thinks that they're going to deny this? I mean, seriously, seriously, who's going to deny this?
You went in there, you're wrong, you should be a lawyer, sir.
You know...
It's the process, Commissioner.
I, I understand it's the process, and I've been a big proponent for this process not to have this kind of stuff happen, but to put out the, a meeting, notice of meeting, to have a 10-minute meeting, come in and say to vote on this...
Yep.
Why...
Can we vote with three people?
Yeah, well, you need a quorum, you need a quorum, you have to have at least three people.
I mean, so it's not obligated for every, you're, you're saying that it's going to pass automatically. All I'm saying is...
I speculate.
Yeah, speculate. All I, all I would like to do is, I do not want to push it through tonight because of my principles on stuff coming in at the last minute, and if you want an opportunity to check on it, that's what I want to give you, maybe even the public, I don't know.
The tangible question to the commission is, would that extra time benefit any commissioner in calling and gaining information? Or, it's your pleasure, gentlemen. I would need a motion, or else we move on?
Well, really, from a fiduciary standpoint, we would, they bought one, and they've, I would take it that that one's been paid off.
Yes.
Okay, well, see, coming to us would have presented their, basically their ledger of showing us that they purchased it for so much, it was paid off, and how that took place. That's, that's what the bank is, Upper Peninsula State Bank is looking at.
They're looking at the reliability of us backing them if something happens.
Right, but they also looked at what they, their history of what they did, that would have been a good thing for us to have had, even though it was passed on the 22nd of last month, that could have been material, we could have received by now.
Would anybody feel better if she came and made a presentation at that special meeting?
She asked to come here tonight, and I said, I, I do not know if it would help or not.
Well, I, I think that they, anybody that's asking for this kind of stuff should come and present their case.
Because I told her, I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote on an issue like that, because this is my first notification, I might talk to her about exactly how this process works.
Well, if we're going to have a special meeting, we need to do it quickly, I mean, set the date and then get her here, but essentially, I think in good faith, they haven't defaulted. They are, you know, an authority and a partner for this community, and provide a very valuable, it's whether you want to set a precedent or simply just have, put it on the chopping block tonight, what, what would you guys want? Steve has made his point clear, and it's very, it's appreciated.
My opinion is we take care of it tonight.
Well, let's do that in the form of a motion, I guess, and then in a second, we'll see if it gets even off the launch pad. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we just handle this tonight.
So we offer a resolution tonight, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, it's, so Commissioner Peterson moves that we should offer a resolution tonight?
I'll support it.
Okay, it's supported by Commissioner Barron, now we're at the discussion stage. Is there discussion, please?
Mr. Chair, we, we're not breaking any policies by the parliament.
I don't believe we are, because we're not spending any money directly.
Are we setting a past practice that we're trying to, I don't know, I'm just saying, because I know Mr. Barron even tonight mentioned that they've been losing money. I mean, I got that in the back of my head of what you're talking about.
The regular landfill is doing very well, the landfilling, it's the recycling that's the, yeah, it's the anchor pulling on it. But there's still, from what I've seen on the minutes, because I'm not part of the board, they are in the black. But we just did this with the chamber, just not too...
Yes, we did.
So...
And we called it an emergency.
So we actually gave...
Yeah, but we actually wrote a check for that, we won't...
What we're doing here is we're taking, we're co-signing... What we're doing here is, we're taking, we're, we're co-signing, basically, which-
My point is, if they default, we got bigger problems than a, I mean, we would have huge problems. But what is your pleasure, is any other discussion, please? We have a motion on the floor. You have a second? And any additional discussion, 'cause I'm not cutting anybody off? All right, let's do a roll call on this, then.
I just wanna clarify, it's a, a motion to adopt a resolution to co-sign for the,
That's essentially what it is, but I don't think that's the resolution, it's the resolution of support.
A resolution backing us on our finances of this new Tana, I mean, if Mr. Peterson wants, uh-
The resolution?
I'll, I'll bring this to her and-
Yep.
All right, um, any other questions? Yeah, well, yeah. This would be on a resolution of support, which would be used as a co-signer application.
Melner?
Yes.
View?
Present. I'm for it, but I'm-
Yes.
I'm not for it this way.
Yes.
Yes.
Good, I'm happy.
Well, I'm happy, you're happy. All right, um, we have item nine point six, Ashley?
So, we have received a amendment to the work order of the data conversion, um, this project has been ongoing since twenty-one and, um, twenty-two. So, we're looking for just approval of this amendment and a signature.
Okay, so that'd be basically-
The amendment is on, is presented on your next cloud, um, there are two changes in it, and this is-
And authorizing it's signed?
Yep, and we just need it signed, and this is also going to cost us zero dollars for user fees, this is what I had talked about earlier in my report, administrator's report, where that the state put in their, uh, budget.
And this is mandatory, like, basically?
Basically, yes.
All right.
Commission?
Well, I move to, uh, to, uh, accept this.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner View, additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, that passes, uh, we are, I need a motion to go into closed session right now, so we could discuss- Collective bargaining, I oppose it, okay? I would need a motion by a, a board member.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support, okay, moved by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner Peterson, all those in favor of going into closed session to discuss collective bargaining, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we'll be back.
Yeah, use the bathroom, please, gentlemen.
He approved, he said yes.
Uh, you?
He said yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
It was too good, that one.
There's those two. Yeah. Yes. Someone.
I don't get it.
I don't know what we're saying.
We have a big, that's something I never asked you to be yelled at.
Okay, so now I'll have that one deal before. I'm sorry.
I saw. Yes. I'm.
What I can send this back. Well.
I can't. I think that called it. Yes. I'm not. That's all. I have a time and place. I don't want to. It's like my first year. I didn't see. I'm like. Thanks. I see. I want to. I think. Uh, you say that. I guess. I have like that. I'm. Oh, yes. No, that's true. It could be out there. I mean, I think they hear. I'm. I.
They were. They were.
And they saw. Yes. The last thing. So. So. I don't know. She was. She was. I don't know. This. This. Oh. All of mine. And. And. Oh, yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah. Well. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. I was. Now. People. Yeah. Thanks. I only. I'm. 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 I don't. I'm. I don't. Oh. I said. You know. I'm. 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 You're. I'm. First day. I'm. 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 I have. I'm. You know. Got the word?
Any of you need the bathroom before we start?
Already did.
Anybody need the bathroom?
I think that when you want that.
All right, already did.
Is that your hand ready?
We are back. We are bringing the meeting back to order, folks. Thank you. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. We are back in session, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We made no decisions or took no votes in that discussion. The item on the labor agreement. What is your pleasure, Commissioner?
I would move that we present this to the Personnel Committee to look it over.
Motion by Commissioner.
I'll support.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner View to send this issue to the Personnel Committee, supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that issue will be sent to the Personnel Committee. We have general public comment. Thank you for waiting. You have three minutes to address the board on any issue you choose. General public comment, please.
Christine Williams, Ford River Township. At the April 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, I shared with this commission that Mr. Mattson, acting as the lead of the Conservation District and under contract with the county to manage the county parks, took $478,614.09 from park revenue from 2011 to 2022. These dollars were labeled as administration in the Conservation District's finances and started out at $3,500 annually and grew to up to $75,000 annually. This money was transferred from park funds to the General Fund of the Conservation District and paid out to employees as bonuses, with the greatest amount paid to Mr. Mattson. During this time, the legal contracts with the county did not authorize the Conservation District to charge this fee because the Conservation District was being provided office space in support and support in lieu of charging administration. So not only did the Conservation District take nearly $500,000 from park revenue, but they also got free use of an office during this period of time. At a subsequent meeting, Mr. Mattson took to the podium to address what I had brought forward. And during that time Mr. Mattson spoke, I heard two statements that gave me significant pause. One statement was, quote, "We had a verbal agreement," end quote. The second was, quote, "We had a handshake deal," end quote. Now, I am no attorney, but I know written legal contracts take precedence over backroom chats or handshakes. So whatever verbal agreements and handshakes Mr. Mattson thought he had, don't override those legal contracts. So I am here again to request that this board address these funds and the contracts that were in place from 2011 to 2022. As a fiscally responsible person, I want to know how this board is going to address what I perceive as a mishandling of public funds. If you are investigating this, I commend you for that. If you are not, and you just want to sweep it under the rug, that's your prerogative too. Either way, I would like to hear from you. I believe this board needs to take an action by way of motion to communicate this publicly. It's your decision. Lastly, I want to address what I perceive as an internal conflict between several of you and Mr. Mattson. While loyalty and integrity are two important values that shape our personal and professional lives, loyalty can sometimes blur the lines between supporting someone blindly and following their lead, sometimes leading individuals to overlook wrongdoing or turn a blind eye when there's unethical behavior. Integrity is adhering to a strong moral code and doing what is right regardless of the consequences. If you can find it in yourselves, choose integrity over loyalty when it comes to this.
Thank you, good. Please hold your applause, please. Thank you. General public comment.
Diane Weber. I would just like to know if it's appropriate to ask a question to Nancy. I was just wondering what the name of the machines that are going to be purchased in...
It's very appropriate to ask the question. I mean. She could answer that under concerns shortly.
I'll answer your concerns.
Okay.
Anything else, Sam?
No, I would just like to know what that is, and if it is Dominion, I am very, very concerned at what has been going on all over the United States with that machine, so.
Okay. We'll get to that shortly. Thank you. General public comment. General public comment, please. Thank you.
Barbie, hi. Barbie Clermont, Escanaba Township. When tabling an item, I had thought that you should provide a date and time on that so the private, the people, can know when this will be brought up again. Also, for as far as the election, time of the elections, except... Let's see. Except for special elections to fill vacancies or otherwise provided in the Constitution, all elections for national, state, county, and township offices shall be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in each even number of years or on such other date as members of Congress of the United States regular election. It's one day in the Constitution. As far as QPAD, when I got here, they were talking about this. I've checked that out, went on it. I'm being part of the zoning and planning board. I've used it and checked things out on it. But it is another bureaucracy entity funded by the state, which we pay for, that creates revenue and state jobs, allowing it to grow bigger. I saw a presentation showing us all the different representatives and rules that will be there, all making it confusing and very hard to follow for any private, we the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. All right, general public comment, please. General public comment.
I'm Clayton Harris. I live in Rapid River. I brought to the attention of the Building and Health Department homes that are being built without permits, inspections. And brought Jack Smith's attention to one. Jack Smith, after multiple meetings with them, finally did go out and say he was going to do something. He had a conversation with the family, said buy a building permit and you're code compliant. You're good. They avoided paying taxes. They avoided using the building system. The home, to my attention, by the Health Department, was hooked up to an illegal septic system. If somebody dies in that building, I think the county is liable for it. I told them as a retired builder, I know of four other homes in the area. I could get no response from them. I was advised to go up the ladder. I went up the ladder to Jack's boss. I was told to bring it to the commissioner's attention because they don't enforce codes in Delta County. So Delta County gets no revenue from this, and a family like that skipping out on taxes, skipping out on the building codes and rules, they should be fined substantially to help pay for the building department, to help pay the county's wages and bills that they have. Have they asked me about any of the other homes? Not one. They said, what do you want me to do? They don't enforce the codes. The sheriff refuses to. The courts refuse to. I find that really hard to believe. That's like saying the sheriff's writing tickets out, and you just go to court and you don't get a fine. The way I understood it as a builder, you were fined, penalized for what you did by the statute of how bad your penalty was, and if you didn't pay it, it was added to your taxes. You didn't pay your taxes, the county took your home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Hello, my name is Brian Godfrey. I am the president of Upper Michigan Gun Owners Association. As of this week, we will be pushing forth in policies that we have in our organization where we're going to start holding commissioners and people, family members of those accountable. What I mean by that, it doesn't matter if you're family, if you're a friend, if you're a commissioner, if you don't believe in God or you don't believe in the Constitution, we will start flipping seats. We, as of this December, after this next push, will be 1,000 members. We will have the power behind us to do that. We're kind of tired of, in the organization, a lot of the drama that goes on and that causes a lot of problems, not only for you, but a lot of people that are in here. It's what I'm trying to say is, I've been telling a lot of people this lately, is don't let your emotions dictate your actions because you're stuck with what you did and what you just said. Take a second about what you're thinking about and just to know that everybody in here, friend, member of the organization, not being put on notice because we need to start holding everybody accountable.
Thank you, sir. General public comment, please. General public comment. Sir.
Hello, Gary Gustafson from Rapid River. As far as the easement goes for the Cornell property with Rory Mattson, that is completely illegal. The county does not have the authority to give Rory an easement because the state, when you signed that trust fund grant, the county gave the state part of the rights to that property. They're probably actually on the title, if you check. Otherwise, the grant that you signed specifically states that they have to give permission for any change of views, especially for access or something like that. And the trust fund is oil, natural resource money, mineral money stuff. It belongs to everybody in the state. So even though they have a trust fund board and you're trying to seek John Mays's approval, it's not up to him. This is constitutionally protected money, State of Michigan Constitution, and they have certain rules and regulations they have to follow as well. And if there's not a good reason to give up that easement, they legally can't even do that. And whoever the county attorney is should have known that that trust fund board has to sign off on an easement. Anybody can still use that road. The county's easement is no good. Rory's easement's no good because it was never, you never asked permission of the trust fund board. So there's a third party on there that has not signed off on that easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. General public comment, please. Public comment, please.
I have two comments from the public. First one is from Dana Venefin from the city of Escanaba. Last meeting, you were asked about if our county still supports Billaroo now that you know it has stringent DEI policies in place. And as Moyle has stated, it would be easier to come along to get along, but that's just not the way you three do business, especially when it comes to supporting the elderly in our community because UpCap has DEI policies. The only one who affirmed his support for Billaroo was Commissioner Melner. Thank you. I will read this email I sent to Moyle and Peterson on August 9th and have resent it weekly since then, and still no response. There are only two available answers. No, we do not support Billaroo in the billion-dollar expansion. It would be easier to come along to get along, but that's just not the case with how you three do business, and you made it crystal clear you cannot support something with DEI in it. Or two, yes, of course we support Billaroo and their billion-dollar investment in our community, which would make you hypocrites. Please clarify our county's support or non-support of Billaroo now knowing they also have DEI policies so our community can be aware. Thank you.
Second item. You have another letter?
Yes.
Okay.
I am Teresa Ross, Ford River Township. After last commission meeting, I asked Mr. Barron, who represents Ford River Township, how to get Zoom on the agenda. He told me he can't request agenda items, which I found puzzling. He brushed me off and told me to talk to the chairman, Moyle. I then talked with Mr. Moyle and set up a meeting with him, the IT director, Brandon. We met on August 22nd. I did my homework and presented the cost and platform of what other UP counties do to provide Zoom. No county pays more than $100 a month and most pay less than 50. It soon became evident that Mr. Moyle was simply going through the motions of placating me. What did I find out was that they hired an assistant to Brandon, but he only works until 4:00 PM and works the help desk. According to Administrator Young, all American rescue dollars have been committed, and there is nothing left over for Zoom infrastructure. They claim that this room is technologically unable to support Zoom easily. When asked why, in 2023, this is not a priority, there was no answer. When I asked why they did not pursue additional estimates other than the one for $75,000, there was no answer. When I asked IT director Brandon, who directs him to seek further estimates, he confirmed that the board does. When I asked Administrator Young, why does she not check her emails during public comment section, she had no answer. I had to email her this comment prior to 4:00 PM to have it included here. I believe this board continues to gaslight its constituents and prefers less public input. Since it hurts those of us who are disabled and others that cannot physically attend, we are out of luck and they don't care.
Public comment, please. Thank you for sending those in. General public comment. Sir, welcome.
Breed Hyken, Escanaba, Michigan. Yeah, I'm back. Commissioner, when I was a young man growing up, I was always taught that if you make a mistake, rectify it. If you say something that's not truthful or something incorrectly, be a gentleman and you correct it. I owe Mr. View an apology. Last month, I said to Mr. View, I accused Mr. View of stealing $6,000 from the Gladstone DDA, the city of Gladstone. Mr. View, I sincerely apologize. After doing some research, I find out that actually you stole $3,000. I do hope you'll accept my apology.
All right, very good. General public comment, please. General public comment.
Julie Lacos, Escanaba. Mr. Chair, what happened to the personal attacks not being allowed?
Applause, I guess. This board will address the personal attack issue. General public comment. General public comment.
Nate Cheesebro, City of Escanaba. I appreciate you correcting the number that I quoted on Facebook that you corrected earlier. You said I didn't have all the facts, and also Kathy Scott said I didn't have all the facts, so I'm wondering where it is or what letter you have to sign up for to get the facts that Kathy Scott has regarding that. get the facts that Kathy Scott has regarding that. I thought it was 750. Turns out it's over 800,000. Maybe your new nickname will be the Million Dollar Man instead of Sergeant Major.
Thank you, sir. Have a nice night. Okay, please refrain from your clapping. Please refrain from clapping. Go ahead.
Kelly Van Genhofen, City of Escanaba.
Stop for a minute, please. I need it quiet, and I will have quiet when she's talking. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kelly Van Genhofen, City of Escanaba. I have just a concern and a question maybe you could answer in Commissioner's comments. I was rewatching the January 17th meeting when you guys decided to go with commissioners' informational workshops instead of committee of the whole meetings. And during that discussion, it was said three different times that your informational workshop items would be on agenda items only of that specific meeting. So at last month's meeting, when Commissioner Barron got up and gave his speech on the difference between a constitutional, I don't even remember what it was, but any... That's right, thank you. A constitutional republic versus a democracy, that was not an agenda item. And then also tonight, with QPAD being asked to come in and give a presentation, I may have missed it, but I didn't think that was an agenda item either. Also, in your discussions of doing the informational workshop instead of the committee of the whole, it was mentioned by Commissioner View that if you felt the informational workshops weren't doing you guys justice, that you could go back to committees of the whole, and so maybe you wanted to consider doing that unless you have specific workshop items that you want to discuss that are on the agenda. Because that was the framework that you set in yourselves, and now you're not following your framework. So maybe it's just something you want to address under Commissioner's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very good. General public comment. General public comment.
Lauren Van Genhofen, Schaefer, Michigan. Mr. Moyle, I'd like to address your idea to limit the possibility for the public to giving comments on the way the county conducts its business. I know it's your idea because you had your best friend Reed Hyken introduce this idea in public comment at a previous meeting. Previous board chairs haven't had any problem with keeping order during commissioners' meetings. So maybe it's time to look in the mirror instead of always thinking that some other people are at a problem. Narcissism is a self-centered personality style characterized as having excessive preoccupation with oneself and one's own needs, often at the expense of others. I think, and I'm pretty sure I'm not alone, that the real problem here is you, Mr. Moyle. If you can't handle your responsibilities as a chairman of the board, there's no shame in stepping down this chair and letting somebody else take the position. As for the issue of the municipal attorney, Scott Graham, quit trying to gaslight the public that our prosecuting attorney would not be comfortable handling some aspects of her job in this county. We all know she's well-qualified. We all know you're just trying to throw your body grime a bone. Thank you.
One more time, refrain from clapping, please. All right? Thank you. What's it? All right, general public comment, please. General public comment. All right, general public comment is over, and we will go into Commissioner's concerns now. Mr. Peterson.
Oh. I guess I'm going to pass for the moment. I might ask to come back in after.
All right, very good. Mr. View?
Thank you for the apology. My office is open so that you can come and see the facts and not form opinions from other people on the transaction with the city of Gladstone. It's a never-ending issue for seven years because nobody wants to look into what it entails. So I just offer that to anyone that hears me, and especially for those that want to talk about the person and not the issue. The other thing is, I did my first intake with the VSO officer, with an Army guy that just got out of service. Very interesting. I'm hoping that we can have something in the budget for him to help out his program. I did learn a lot of the time it takes and different things, so I'm still hoping we can get in a meeting with Dave and Ashley and myself so we can get that taken care of. I also talked to a guy out of Lansing. This is my last thing. Don't worry, it ain't going to be over five minutes. Steve Noble from Eagle. It had an issue to do with Escanaba Township, and I found out a great program that I'm going to try to introduce at the landfill where they have grants for tires. And they need a facility to collect them. We may be able to get... There's nothing guaranteed now, but there's money out there to get a tire chipper, and people can bring tires in for nothing. Like right now, we're paying $3, $4, $5 a tire. I thought, what a service for the whole county. And he's encouraging us to have the whole county involved in it. But you have to have a facility. So I'm going to bring it up at our landfill board and see if we can move forward on it. The deadline for this year is like 14 days away. So I don't know how much I can get, but maybe we can apply for a small grant right now, but it's ongoing all the time. And I made a mistake. Opioid settlement. I would like it to be put, or discussion on that, where we have a standing committee that starts out how to progress in spending that money for this, for the people that need it, that had the drug abuse from getting so much medication. In the beginning, they would probably have to meet a little more, but it's for an 18-year program, and I think that later on, they would probably only meet as needed, which wouldn't be a lot. But there's a lot of providers in the area that are helping out these people, and I think they would like to be part of this standing committee to make the decisions on how that money is spent and recommend to our board so that we spend it in the proper manner that is needed by these, you know, Catholic services, Michigan Works, Sheriff's Department, stuff like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Melner?
No comment.
Mr. Barron?
I just have one of my quotes.
All right, what is the quote of the day?
Well, this is from Winston Churchill. Kites rise highest against the wind, not with it.
Nancy? You want to answer the question?
So I just wanted to answer your question on the voting equipment. Okay, so there's three types of voting equipment that are approved for use in the state of Michigan. One is heart, one is election source and systems, election systems and something. It's ESNS, and then Dominion. And currently, we have Dominion, so I have no option but to go with more Dominion equipment. And the model that will be using or purchasing are two Prime tabulators, I'm sorry, not Prime, that's the other one, Imagecast precinct, security-enhanced tabulators. And so they have additional security on them, and then also the ICX Prime package, which is the touchscreen, the voter assist terminals, and it's a touchscreen. But it will also, this new system will also print ballots so that we don't have to have 22 stacks of ballots there for the voters to use. And I know there's a concern out there with Dominion equipment, but I can tell you from my own experience in using this equipment for 22 and a half years, that we test the equipment with ballots. We mark the ballots, and we know what the result should be, and we put them through the machine. So we test them before every election at least three times. I test them once, and the local clerks test them twice for a preliminary and a public accuracy test. And that's a smaller test. That's a smaller deck. Sometimes it's only, it's anywhere between six ballots and 180 ballots. So that might not be the best test, but I think the best test is, we've had probably close to 20 recounts in this county since I've been clerk, at least 20, and where we hand-count the ballots. We hand-count them. We look at every single ballot, and our results have been within one or two votes of what the tabulator has done. And so not only we have recounts, but starting about three or four years ago, after every state election, the general election in November, we audit the precincts randomly. Three or four precincts are picked, and I go in with the local clerk and one other person, and we hand-count. So in the 2020 election, we hand-counted the Trump-Biden race, and those results came out exactly, exactly the same as what the tabulator came out. So it gives me a lot of confidence, and anybody who's been at a recount, has been part of a recount, it gives them confidence in that equipment. You know, I can't speak to other things that may be happening throughout the state or the country or in other areas, but I feel very confident about the equipment that we've used so far, and we will continue to audit the ballots against the machines after the elections. Because I think that's the best, you know, the best way to know that the ballots counted exactly the way they should. Okay? And if any of you have any more questions about that, I'm happy to have you come and do the preliminary test with us. And if you want to come and watch the hand-count after in the audits, I'm happy to have the public layer because the more the people are aware of what's going on or can see for themselves that the equipment is accurate, the more confidence we have in our local elections. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Ashton?
Thank you.
Okay, if I were a narcissist, I wouldn't want you here, and I'm happy to see people here, whether I like to hear what you have to say or not. That's not the issue. If I was a gaslighter, I know what Saul Alinsky is, and those tactics don't work with me. I'm sorry. I give you my number, 906-235-8427. If I was either, I wouldn't give you my number. I don't live in my past. Some of you do, and I'm sorry for that. I can't control what I did 25 years ago, but I can control my future, and my desire is what's best for this county. With that, I wish you a fine evening. Do we have any 30-day appointments? Very good. We have our schedule set up. As far as the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on 9/19/23. Then we have another one on 10/10/23 at 5:15 in the Service Center. We are still in session for a moment, please, and then enjoy. And then there's another one at 10/17. So we have, we have, our schedule changed a little bit for October because of the compulsory meeting. With that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
If all favor may leave. Thank you.